Okay, it is just about seven. We have three meetings left, so why don't we start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I have Pledge of Allegiance in State of the Land of the United States of America and Tribute to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all. And the first meeting tonight is the meeting of the Nantucket Regional Transit Authority. And we have a number of items to go over. And the first item on our agenda, is there any public comment tonight for the Regional Transit Authority? No? All right, thank you. The minutes, we do have in our packet a set of minutes for the last meeting. Is there no objection? We'll ask if those be approved soon. None. And the next item on our agenda is a compensation matter. And the setting the salary of the NRTA administrator is the responsibility of the Board. In our packet, we have a recommended increase, which is unusual. I don't need to leave the Board. And I think we would need to approve that, so the public knows the increase recommended is one and a half percent. And so we also have public, our salary public. What is your salary?
It's right there. He'll bite you.
We'll make it public, so everybody knows.
Eighty-two thousand, five hundred and ten and eleven cents.
Thank you very much.
Whoops.
Okay. So there's no secret about that. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved. Any further to the second?
Second.
Second, further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, Paula, that means you gotta really...
Thank us.
Thank you. I had to put the green button on.
I forgot the green button at the start of the meeting, too. So, my apologies.
Ms. Chairman, I'm gonna recuse myself from the next matter, so...
All right. Patty's gonna recuse on the next matter, which is a discussion of the NRTA budget for the coming season. And Paula, we'll turn to you to introduce and walk us through that.
Okay. You have before you the FY13 proposed budget. This budget reflects, as you may recall, being informed at the last meeting, a decrease in our federal 5311 funding, which is just under $60,000 decrease. And I did include a 3% increase in state contract assistance from FY12, which I feel is a reasonable...
That's an anticipated increase? It's not in the bank yet?
It's all anticipated.
Yeah, gotcha.
But it's reasonable. So the total FY13 operating budget is $1,583,586. Operating revenues are $861,693, leaving the net cost of service at $721,893,000. The state contract assistance is $383,813, and the local assessment is $338,080. This budget does reflect the recommendations for the 2012 fixed route service as presented.
So the next item on our agenda will be the fixed route. And really, in order to, why don't you take us through the, roughly, the changes that were necessitated by the $60,000 reduction. Whitey?
Yes. What is a, what's fully funded staff?
That is what Greenhound pays to the NRTA to have information aids in the Greenhound building.
Thank you.
Yep.
And you might also describe the local assessment and how that comes to the town? In other words, it's not, we don't see that as part of our town budget as an allocation, but really, it does come out of the state grants to the town?
Uh, it comes off the cherry sheet.
Right.
And it's the amount assessed to the town of Nantucket for the transit services.
So in effect, the town is paying that portion of the budget?
Yes. And that's required in state law, that the local communities toward the transit service.
So we're required to pay $338,080?
Yes.
Out of the general fund?
No, it comes off the cherry sheet.
And the cherry sheet's the dollars that are allocated by the state to us?
DOR, I believe, does that. That's who, I get my reimbursement from the Department of Revenue.
Does it take away from some other town funds?
I don't know that to be, we've been doing it so long that it's standard now, so I don't, I don't know that process. I don't see that end of that process.
Good question, though. In other, you think of the state as having a number of types of grants to cities and towns. Some are for public education issues, some might go to Mr. Burns to help him in his transportation activities. And those monies are made available by our tax payments to the state, and then they distribute them back. So, Whitey, I'm not sure it takes away from other allocations, but it's a good question.
Yeah. I just don't ever see that, that part of the process.
Yeah, I just was sort of wondering whether it's earmarked, or whether it was, you know, we got a big bucket of money, and they say, well, let's put this much here and this much here.
And I think, I think it's earmarked to a certain degree, if that's the right term, because it's an increase of two and a half percent. So each year, it's calculated based on that.
Can you find out and let us know?
Sure.
So back to the budget. Any other questions we have? Paula, again, then the route structure, the which you have to go through, that's the basis primarily for the budget?
Basically, the core services are going to remain the same. There were, there is 1,630 fewer hours of service in 2011, and those service cuts were made by starting later. Labor Day's earlier this year, Columbus Day's earlier this year. So that bought us a few days and hours of services. Several of our routes end Labor Day, the beach buses, and a couple of the other routes end Labor Day.
If they're both, both earlier, then it would net out zero. Memorial Day's later.
Well, last year, like, Labor Day was like the sixth or the seventh, and Columbus Day was like the 10th. This year, it's been...
So if it's three days earlier, I guess the idea is, in theory, we're saving three days of operations.
You're not running... Yeah.
On one end, and we're gaining three on the other end.
What other end? Anyway, so in addition to starting later and ending a little earlier based on those holidays, the frequency in service on the Mid-Island and Maya Comet and Matikit route, the increased frequency will start later in June and end earlier in September than it had in previous years. It's kind of...
So all those reduction in hours of service translate right into the budget? We have to pay for fewer hours of operations, and that's the way we save the $60,000, in Any other questions from? I think we need to go back. We'll probably need a resolution and a motion to approve the budget. And so I've got three of us here. Is there a motion to approve the budget?
So moved.
May? You have a second, Bobby?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. So Paula, that takes care of the budget.
Okay.
And do we need a resolution on the routes as well? Would that be helpful?
Yes, please. On the routes, you just need to approve the dates and hours of service as presented. And then, I provided you with the fares, passes, and advertising rates. The only change I'm going, I'm recommending to the fares and the season pass rates is a new category. And that category is for veterans and active military personnel. My recommendation would be to include that in the half fare that is also provided to seniors 65 and older and persons with disabilities. And on the pass rates, to add the veteran and active military at a pass rate of $40, which is consistent with the senior and disabled pass. So the motion and resolution vote on those two as well.
So you'd like a resolution to approve the route structure and the fare structure?
And the pass structure, yes.
The pass, okay.
Yep.
Whitey?
Does that...
Patty, welcome back.
Thank you.
Sorry, I snuck right up there, looking the wrong way.
That's right.
Does that include the Coast Guard?
Yes.
Thank you.
So back to a board resolution. Are there any other questions before we move to endorse the fee and pass structure and the routes? Someone want to make a motion to that, in effect?
So moved.
So moved. Thank you. A second. Patty, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Paula, you got that?
I got that, and now we get busy. Getting everything ready.
Yeah, the work comes now.
Yes.
Right.
So the next item is the approval of an agreement with our auditor. And it looks like we have a proposed three-year agreement. And we've had the same auditor for the past three years. Is that correct, Paula?
Correct.
And so the fee structure for FY12 is $96.50, and 13, what is it, $99.85, and 14 is $99.95. And Paula notes that if we receive over $500,000 in federal grants, there'll be an additional fee. We have to file then a federal grant audit as well. So that's the structure, and the Board would be asked to approve the agreement with the auditor, Bruce Nordling, CPA. Questions? Whitey?
How often have we changed auditors?
We've had Bruce for the last three or four years. This is, he is our second auditor.
Yeah, we changed auditors after a unfortunate event three years ago. And I think we've been reasonably happy with the new auditor, Whitey.
Hey.
Patty?
I just wanted to add that he brought us through that event, I thought, pretty, very well, as well, so.
Yeah, I agree.
I would move approval.
So we have approval for the contract. Is there a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Other business? Paula, do you have any other business?
Just to update you on the Dover Street speed hump issue that went to traffic safety. They were willing to look at that, but had some concerns with how and when that speed hump went in and asked me to make sure that the residents, all the residents on that street wanted that speed hump removed. So I'll be doing a letter or some type of request to see what the interests are on that street.
Yeah, to make sure it's not just one or two folks at the street in general, then you proceed.
Yep. So I'll keep you posted on how that works out. And then I'll go back to traffic safety with those results.
Good. Is that it for your report for tonight?
That is.
I do have one other item. We have had, as part of our Board, a, as I understand, it's a non-voting position representing the disabled community, and Mickey Rowan has served in that capacity for several years. Mickey's finding a full, sort of, activity of other events and has, did not re-up for that position. And as I understand, the position is appointed, Paula, you said, by the town manager?
Correct.
So we'll figure out how to deal with that, and then we would hopefully appoint somebody and get a full complement of Board members. And we want to thank Mickey Rowan for his service. He came to almost all the meetings as scheduled and contributed as he felt appropriate, so. Whitey?
Do they generally, or does the town manager generally solicit people that are on the disability committee?
The process for that, Whitey, is the NRTA puts an ad in the paper seeking interest, like, much like you guys do with your committee appointments with the interest form. Mickey's the only one that has ever submitted one, but he did indicate that there, he may know someone that's interested, so I'll be working...
It's not a requirement for, for appointment?
No.
That it be from the disability committee?
No, no. There's, there's three requirements. It needs to be a disabled individual, someone with a family member that has a disability, or someone that serves on, in some type of capacity that deals with disability issues.
I did talk to Mickey today, and he sends his best and wishes us well.
She watches on TV.
Mr. Chairman, I think we should send Mickey a letter of thanks.
I think we should. He did yeoman service, so we'll, we'll do that.
Yep.
Bobby? And that's all I have. entertain a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
So moved. Second?
Second.
So the NRTA will be adjourned. Paula, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
We look forward to getting up and running.
Yep.
And getting those iPhone applications working, so we know right where the bus is, right?
That's right, absolutely.
All right. Next item tonight is a meeting of the county commissioners, and we'll turn it over to Patty for that meeting.
Thank you, Rick. Tonight, we're gonna, tonight, I'm gonna convene the meeting of the county commissioners for the 22nd of February, 2012. First item is our announcements. I don't see Libby or announcements, so we'll let that go.
We moved through the NRTA so quickly, she isn't back yet.
Yes. We'll give her, we'll give her a chance when she gets back. We don't think we have any public comment. Is there anyone here tonight on matters before the county that are not on the agenda? Seeing none, new business, not aware of any business that's not on the agenda? Approval of minutes warrants impending contracts. We have minutes of the 25th of January, 2012, at nine in the morning and at 10:00 in the morning, it looks like, and that night. So three sets of minutes. Any changes, comments? Seeing none, those are approved. Approval of payroll and treasury warrants for February, 2012. Comments? Seeing none, that is approved. All right. We have public hearings tonight. We will be addressing our second public hearing with respect to the Hummock Pond Road bike path. So I'm gonna open the public hearing to consider taking by eminent domain the fee simple titled proportions of certain easements along the southeast side of Hummock Pond Road from Milk Street Extension to Cisco Beach Parking Lot, all shown on plan entitled "Easement Plan Located in Nantucket, Massachusetts, dated December 13, 2011, prepared by Vanessa Hagen Russland, Inc., pursuant to authority of Chapter 79 and 82 of Massachusetts General Law or otherwise." Is there anyone here in the public? We've now opened the public hearing, wishing to speak on this matter. Diane.
I'm Diane Holgate. My husband and I own 80, 82, and 84 Hummock Pond Road. I spoke to you guys last time about this. Mike Burns was supposed, he did meet with me once. I told him I needed the proposal that he put forth to me in writing, so I could take it to my lawyers. I've gotten nothing. The bike path, as it's going to affect my property right now, I have to move several storage trailers that are full of stuff. Mike had said something about perhaps part of the cost being borne by the town to put the bike path through, and also that the town would pay, help pay for the replaced screening. But I need this in writing. I'm in the middle of a rather onerous lawsuit on this property, and I have to have something to take to my lawyers to make sure this isn't going to complicate my lawsuit farther. I've gotten nothing. I've only, Mike only met with me one time. I know you're wanting to close the public hearing and go on with this tonight, but I really would ask you if you're gonna close the public hearing to table the vote until all the issues are resolved, because I haven't seen nothing. And it's a major impact to my property.
Okay. I had an opportunity to speak to Mike today, and we did talk about your particular property. We do have the option tonight to either continue or to close the public hearing, but we don't necessarily have to take a vote on it, on the matter, tonight. So whether we close it or not, we can continue to discuss the issues with respect to this path, so.
I have to have something that I can take to the lawyers and show it to them and make sure that it's not going to cause a problem.
Right. And I would expect that Mr. Burns is waiting for some authority on that from us, so that he can actually pen that himself. So I appreciate you bringing it forward tonight, because he did bring it up, bring it up to my attention as well, so, in terms of how we might make this work for both of us.
Okay.
Okay?
So I expect something, 'cause I...
Well, we can, you know, we can discuss that, but, you know, essentially, we needed the matter before. So if you want to comment on anyone from the Board, it is a public hearing. I thought we'd sort of collect some views, but...
Hey, one reaction is, quickly to this, is that because we do have a tight timeline here...
Yep.
If we can close the public hearing and take what action, but really assure Diane that we're trying to do what we can to make sure things work out.
Once you close...
But I don't know that we want to delay that.
Once you close the public hearing and take the vote, then I am left out in the cold.
Well, actually not, because we can close the public hearing and not take the vote, in which case, we're still negotiating with the neighborhood. So that's, I think, what you're, what you suggest.
Some way to keep us moving along, Patty.
Right.
You know, I just don't think we want to be open-ended here. And if there's something that Andrew could do, or Andrew and Mike can get together and work this out...
And I think ultimately, just from this minute, you know, in the record, we have your issue. The fact that Mr. Burns has made that clear, that it's possible we would negotiate that, and, you know, some consensus, if the group feels the consensus to make this work.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think I have a sense now for how much is involved, but if it's reasonable, we all want to be reasonable.
It's more than just moving an empty 40-foot trailer. The trailers that are in the way are full of furniture and, and storage items, and they're not just something you can pick up with a truck and move out of the way. It's gonna be a significant expense for us to have to move them.
Maybe, Mike, Mr. Burns, in terms of next steps in getting an assessment in terms of costs to us, so that we can make that consideration, like I said, for the public hearing's sake, you know, we can note, so note your issue, and I think we can go on, but just to add a bias right now, Mike, if you could let me know what might be some next steps.
Next steps for this particular property?
Yeah.
Yeah, the property owner mentioned that screening of the junkyard was an issue. I said that shouldn't be a problem at all to provide some screening along the property, so that settled that issue. The only other issue that was there was the moving of the storage containers, which was, it was informed to me that there'd be some expense to that, you know, in the magnitude of about $10,000. And that really goes above and beyond what we're doing for a lot of the other property owners. But just figuring out how that's paid for, I mean, there's a damage award for the property that probably could be applied to. That hasn't been figured out yet. And just like you correctly pointed out, I really don't have the authority to, to kind of, you know, give a blessing to something of that cost magnitude without, you know, the county, county approving that. So that's why there's been a delay on responding in writing.
Okay. So...
So is an easement question sort of related to this, whether it's a voluntary?
I can't issue...
Or do we have to go through a taking? I mean, is that sort of what's going on here?
Or, Rick, I think what we could do tonight, and I'm with you, I think we need to close the public hearing tonight, and we can leave the matter open. We can ascertain what the cost would be before we make any next steps, figure out what that would be, how much we can apply in terms of the damages, talk with Diane about what's acceptable. It could be very, it could be that we come to an agreement before we have to go through a taking, this kind of process.
That would be nice.
Yeah.
It just, I said, we're involved in a rather extensive lawsuit on the property, and I need to have something...
Right.
So I can see what the impacts of the whole thing are gonna be.
Absolutely. And we understand that. And I think that we can close the public hearing, and I would suggest as well, we not take a vote on the matter tonight, partly, in no small part because of this, that we need to come up, give Mike some, some charge to go ahead and do an assessment of what the cost would be, and then get back to us on that, perhaps at the next, at the next meeting of the county. Okay? All right. Thank you, Diane. Anyone else from the public here to speak? Yes, sir. Please identify yourself.
Good evening. Courtney Neff at 200 Hummock Pond. My concern is a little bit about the root of the path. If we look at it right there, it seems like there's been no effort to move the path off the road a little bit, and behind some of the bushes, and in that case, there are evergreen trees there. There's only one house between Bartlett Farm Road and Somerset, and that whole length of path could easily be off the road, where it doesn't look like an extension of the asphalt and one big wide road, and, in my opinion, greatly harm the rural appearance of the area. And similarly, the, over by Somerset, you're probably aware that the Nantucket Land Council is now in the process of obtaining a conservation restriction on a significant length of property on the far side of the house, approaching Somerset. It seems like we could set the bike path off the road in that area also, and again, preserve the, the high bushes and rural appearance of Hummock Pond Road. This property coming toward us on this side might, we might be able to do the same thing. I'm less certain about that area, but I believe some of that may be conservation land. But I think with very little effort, we could make the path itself more attractive and retain the rural area, rural appearance of Hummock Pond Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments, Mike?
Yeah, just to respond to Mr. Chernor's question about the alignment of the path. Anywhere where the, the path is crossing land bank property, I'm sure anybody who's on the land bank knows this, and I would assume support it, that the path will deviate off the road and wind into the property, you know, in a serpentine manner, where through these conservation properties, it's where the, there's private residential properties, where obviously, you know, the property owner would not want that to happen, so we keep it as close to the road as possible. But where there's the opportunity, where there's conservation property, that it does take the traditional into-the-woods route that a lot of the bike paths on the island have. So I think, I think we took care of that.
Okay. Right. Mr. Dale?
Thank you, Commissioners. Excuse me. My name is Kevin Dale. I'm an attorney, and I represent Stephen and Vicki Chernor, who own four properties along Hummock Pond Road at 190, 192, 194, and 196 Hummock Pond Road. This is about 550 feet of linear frontage along the bike path. On two of these properties, there are existing houses. And the Chernors have been coming to Nantucket for more than 30 years, love the island, raise their children here, they're devoted to it, and they support the bike path. Their concern, though, is their privacy and the fact that both of their houses are roughly 30 feet from Hummock Pond Road. And rather than put everyone through the effort of a taking and a land damage case, and where that might end up, and to delay the bike path, I've been having some good conversations with Mike Burns about perhaps reaching some kind of compromise that would accommodate both the Chernors and the town and make this go forward. And I'd like to just suggest to you what I think may work here, keeping in mind the concerns that the Commissioners have and the planning people have about the bike path. I know that, talking to Mr. Burns, that it's important from a design safety standard to have a path that's roughly 10 feet wide. The Chernors would prefer a narrower path, but 10 feet works for them. What they would suggest is that the location of the bike path be relocated in front of their properties, three feet towards Hummock Pond Road. And this would result in the road, a three-foot buffer, a fence, a bike path, a three-foot buffer, and another fence. More than that, they would be willing to use their land damage award, which is roughly $25,000, to pay for the fence on the Hummock Road pond side of the path, and also to plant indigenous landscaping in the area that's going to be disturbed when the path is built. Right now, there's a lot of honeysuckle in there. I understand it's an invasive species, and they would perhaps put rosarigosa or other things in there. And they'd work with the planning staff and the town to come up with a landscaping plan that would be appropriate, and also make sure the fencing went in. Now, I understand that generally, the bike path, as I understand it, and again, I'm no expert, has a six-foot buffer from Hummock Pond Road to the path. And I know that may be what you want, but in these circumstances, I have clients who want to work with the town, voluntarily grant the easement, pay for the improvements with the suggestion that there'd be a three-foot buffer between the path and Hummock Pond Road in front of their properties, and they would put a fence up there. So I'd like you to consider that, and consider the proposal. I'm happy to work as hard as I can with Mike or anyone else, and Andrew, the planning director, or County Commissioners, to make this happen. But I think that to accommodate the Chernors, their concerns about their privacy, this is a reasonable proposal, and I hope you would consider it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike, did you want to comment on that?
Just, just to clarify, I did speak with Mr. Dale a number of times, and I think he would concede the, or keep the path at a 10-foot distance. The three-foot buffer from the road really isn't ideal, but... The three-foot buffer from the road really isn't ideal, but what was proposed is a fencing between the roadway and the path, and that three-foot buffer, not all that dissimilar from what's along Cliff Road in some sections where it's really tight. And if there is, you know, their willingness to provide private, the landscaping and not put, you know, the town responsible for providing the vegetated buffer, and he's willing to voluntarily donate the easement, it sounds like something staff could probably support, even though there's a bit of a trade-off with the buffer between the path and the roadway.
And I will say too, that I'm really pleased with the 10-foot, because having used the lot, the bike path quite a bit around, the eight-foot really is difficult, I think, and safety-wise is a challenge. But I'm with Mike, I think that this kind of compromise can actually help us in many other respects, so.
Thank you. They prefer eight feet, but I talked to them, and they, 10 feet is acceptable, and I understand your concerns there, and I think, again, it's a reasonable compromise that I'm suggesting.
Well, thank you.
So we're talking about a fence like the, as you said, along Cliff Road?
Mm-hmm.
Just the, so it's not much of a fence, it's just a delineation of some kind, really?
Right. Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'm Allison Groenstein. I'm at 38 Hummock Pond Road. I'm actually right at the turn where we go from Milk Street to Hummock Pond. So I applaud the bike path because it's going to eliminate a danger around the corner that exists right now. What we don't know is, I signed the easement and sent it back with a conditional letter, and there were a couple of questions in there about, right now, there's a sewer grate that actually provides, obviously, the drainage from both Milk Street and Hummock Pond, and if that isn't relocated, I could end up with a drain down my driveway, which could be quite unpleasant. So I'm just curious as to where that stands and what the solutions are going to be.
Thank you. I think we'll ask Mr. Burns to address that.
No, we did speak with engineers about solving that problem, and they did assure us that there would be some design techniques used to keep the water from draining into the property. There, you know, there's a number of catch basin systems and ways to capture and prevent water from flowing down driveways where there's severe grade change and emptying into other yards, so that's been a consideration that's been included into the design.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other public comment tonight on this matter? Yes.
I'm Brian Sullivan. I own 56 Hummock Pond Road. I signed my waiver of damages, passed it in. I just want to say that I'm all for the path. There's a number of individual property concerns, and I hope that they can all get addressed because there's a greater public safety issue that needs to be addressed. So I hope that the board and the planning department can achieve the goal of getting the whole thing built while addressing the individual concerns.
Thank you, Brian, very much. I would have to agree. All right. Anybody else tonight on the public, on the matter of Hummock Pond bike path? Nope. Seeing none, I will now close the public hearing. As I noted to the group, to the commission, we do have the option of either accepting the right-of-way or to...
We have to vote on closing?
Oh, yeah, we do have to vote. In fact, there's a motion I just picked up off the table, buddy, so.
The motion written is...
Do you want to read this for me, since you jumped in?
This is...
So it's, it's not, it's the vote, which we don't really want to do tonight, right?
I don't know what you want to do, but this is what we want to do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm not ready to vote.
Yeah, I'm not ready to...
So why don't we, what?
Maybe just close the public hearing. We don't need a vote.
Close the public hearing, and we can post a meeting whenever, a week or two weeks from now, come back and see if these things have gotten resolved sufficiently, and then we're ready to proceed, hopefully?
Yeah, I think March 28th is the date I was talking with Mike about today, and I think that would be a good, give us time enough to go ahead and make it happen.
We can still meet our other deadlines if we wait till that date?
Right. It's right before town meeting, so. All right. So the public hearing is closed. It sounds like the board...
You want to vote on that?
Vote on that? Do I have a motion then to?
So moved.
To close the public hearing?
No, to continue to March 28th.
But the public...
No, to close the public hearing, but to put the matter on March 28th.
Continuing the matter to March 28th?
Yes.
So moved.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Mike, I have a couple of questions for you on this. I don't know...
Okay, sure. Go ahead.
You know, going through this, the handout that you gave us here, I think we addressed most of these properties. The only one we didn't address was Mr. Pease, and I know, I got an email from Mr. Peese and his lawyer counsel that they were both going to be out of town this week, so.
He was the guy with the tree?
The tree. And I was trying to look at the schematic here, and there's two, the drawing plan underneath the photo has two green dots in it. What are those?
If I could just reference you to the photo here at 166, you'll see a larger tree closer to the, I guess where the picture was taken, and there's a tree behind the larger tree, obviously. The larger tree is in the neighborhood of about 10 or 12 feet from the edge of pavement, and that can be seen here, there's the larger tree there, you know, it's, you know, some distance away. What has been proposed by the property owner is to narrow the path down to, in the neighborhood of six or eight feet, and about two, possibly three feet from the edge of roadway.
To go between the trees and the road?
To go between the tree and the road, and you'll see there isn't a wealth of space here. It's about, again, about 10 feet.
We've done this before. I mean, I drive, just look at the Matwick Road bike path where you go along the Quaker Cemetery, and the bike path for a short section there is right on the road. I would hate to see these trees go, just to keep the path off the road. We're talking about a 75-yard stretch here, not even, 75 feet, where we just, it would come out tighter to the road and then could go back in.
Yeah. If that's the direction that the county would like to take is that, I mean, just to let you know there are some liability issues, we're going to essentially, I mean, I hate to beat around the bush and say, it will be essentially a six-foot wide path there. It's probably not sufficient enough for two bicycles to pass each other, so there will be a conflict at that location.
How wide is the path on the Matwick Road right now? It can't be wider than six feet.
Again, I would preface my response by just saying that the Matwick is a substandard design.
Right.
That is not how paths are built, and could not be built today. But that path is eight feet and is on the edge of roadway. This would be, again, like I said, maybe you get a two-foot separation, but then a six-foot path, you know, okay, so it's even narrower than the Matwick path in that stretch. And again, this is just in front of one property where, once you get outside of the bounds of this property, it would flare out to the other 10-foot path, so this would look very odd. Not to say we don't have odd things on this island, but it's a huge compromise. It's something the staff's not recommending, but, you know, we did provide, we did have engineers look at it, and there's a way to, there's a solution there. It can be narrowed down to six feet and have a two-foot Belgian block buffer, you couldn't get grass to grow on that two-foot strip, maybe a two-foot Belgian block buffer. There is an option available if you want to preserve trees.
Would both trees be able to be saved, or will one have to go?
Under the preferred option, what's, both trees would have to go. We could inch the path a little closer to the road and save the smaller tree, which is further into the property. But again, that, the larger tree is a very close distance.
Assuming bringing it inside is not acceptable.
I'm sorry?
Well, you can bring the path inside the trees, closer, I assume closer to the house, which probably doesn't work, but that's an option, isn't it?
That's an option. I'm sure that it'd be more contentious than this option, but that's another option.
Why don't we move the trees? Maybe it isn't.
Why, I don't think you could. I mean, these are big, old growth trees.
I would have to agree. I'm really with Mike. I'm concerned about the safety issue on that. I mean, riding through Matwick scares me every time I get flushed with the road there.
That's not a good standard. Only if we're pressed for serious matters, I don't know what you do here.
Madam Chairman, just to further the point on discussion of the tree, the larger tree is very close to the road, and there are root systems that are, I'm told are, go the span of the plume of the tree itself, so you could probably assume that the root systems go up to the, or if not, underneath the roadway system. I don't know a thing about trees, but I'm told that, you know, putting a path that close to a tree and going, you know, cutting into the root system so you can get a subbase down will likely kill the tree. So it's, there's no guarantee that if we construct a path with this kind of trade-off in design, that the tree wouldn't even be preserved because of the short distance that we have to work with. So again, I mean, staff's not recommending you go that route of using that, but it is an option that you have, and it's the property owner's asking you to consider that. Again, it's not something our engineers or staff is supporting.
Okay. Any other questions from the board for Mike before we go to the next item? Thanks, Mike, very much. Everybody good? All right. Official business. Board of Selectmen, request to refer petition and layout for Shee Pond Road extension to Planning Board for recommendation. Request to authorize County Chairman to execute public hearing notice for said layout. Is somebody tonight to speak on this? Andrew, are you here for this?
Madam Chairman, Kara could speak a bit about it, but this is basically another step in the process to relocate a portion of Shee Pond Road.
Okay.
The board some time ago made a petition to the county, and this is the first time the county's acted upon it, and then there's a step with the planning board. There's going to be a series of other steps that get taken following this.
Okay. Can you give us a little background, Kara?
Yeah, we've, as you know, a portion of Shee Pond has been rebuilt where it had fallen into the ocean, and a design has been made to relocate Shee Pond away from the ocean on the opposite side of several of the properties. The, there's an appraisal being done presently. The design has been completed, and we're requesting that the county refer the layout to the Planning Board for action so that we can continue the legal process necessary to relocate the existing public way.
Okay, so the matter before us is to refer, can you just rephrase that for me?
Yes, the county has to refer it to the Planning Board for action.
Okay.
Then that continues the legal process that has to be done to relocate the public way.
Okay. Any questions, Kara? Have a motion?
Yeah, we move to refer a petition to the Planning Board to lay out the road as designed.
Great, second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Just because this is going on the property owned by the Conservation Foundation behind?
Right. Thank you.
The second part to this, too, just to authorize Patty's chair to sign up on the notices that we do have to Darius' place.
We notify the abutters that it's going to be...
I move that we authorize the chair to sign the notice appropriately?
Do I second?
There you go.
No, I said, do I have a second?
I'm second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks. Here we go. All right. Commissioners' reports and comments. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Patty. Why don't we then open the meeting of the Board of Selectmen for 22nd of January? And the first item is the board acceptance of the agenda, and we do have a couple of items to mention to the board tonight about the agenda. The first one is, we received an email from both parties to the HDC appeal, asking that that be deferred. They believe they have an arrangement worked out between them, so we will not have to open that public hearing when we get to that point. The other item is that...
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Are we continuing?
Take some other action?
No, but are we continuing to a date certain, or?
I think they hope to resolve it, and they haven't asked to continue it to a date certain.
Okay.
Maybe it helps them to come to an arrangement. Sarah, is that, Sarah Aldrich, can you help us out here?
Yes, we would like you to continue it to a date.
You would?
Without opening...
Maybe we wouldn't like to, to keep the pressure on to get it resolved, right?
That's correct. I mean, we need to keep it open in case something falls apart.
Just in case.
But we're ever so hopeful that we're going to work it out, and we're going to be withdrawing the appeal entirely, but I think...
So do that properly?
Extending to a date certain would be terrific.
So do that properly, what we need to open it when we get there?
You don't need to. You can just continue it without opening to a date certain, and whatever date is convenient for the board, maybe two weeks out or whenever you next...
March 7th? Sound good?
Yeah.
So we'll do that when we get to that item on the agenda then?
That would be great. Thank you very much.
Great. And the other is that the last two items on our agenda related to some real estate activities and affordable housing, we would like to defer those to a future date, might be as late as after town meeting, and with the board's agreement to that, those items will not be heard tonight. Okay? Thank you. Libby, announcements?
Just the one announcement, that we have no board meeting next Wednesday, February 29th, so the next meeting will be Wednesday, March 7th.
All right. That's it for announcements. And public comment, anybody here tonight who wishes to address the board on something not on our agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to new business. I'm not aware of any new business at this time. And then the next item is the approval of minutes warrants and contracts. We have a payroll warrant for the week ending February 19. If there's no objection, that will be approved. We have the treasury warrant for 22 February, and again, if there's no objection, we'll approve that. And the next item are pending contracts. We do have three contracts this evening, and turn to the town manager to help us out with those.
Thank you. We have, the first one is with Town Administration and the Health Department with Research Aviation and Mapping Science LLC for $11,118. This is for an aerial census to estimate the deer population on Nantucket. And actually, we went to the Finance Committee earlier in January and got a transfer from the Reserve Fund.
This was a transfer from the Finance Committee, I've got you.
Yep. I don't know if there's questions, Richard could answer them. And we have two contract amendments for our island home, one with Nantucket Holistic Health for $360,000. That is coming from the island home budget, and that is for occupational therapy services, correct? Physical therapy services. And the other is with Tammy Belanger, $240,000 for three years. That is for occupational therapy services, and these are significant amounts. I did ask Rachel Creashan, our island home administrator, to be present to answer any board questions or to just briefly explain the increase in contract cost.
I think you ought to explain it. Bobby, go ahead.
I just want, before we get to that, Rachel, let me just ask Richard a question about the deer survey. I know, I was at the ThinkCom meeting when this came up, and I know that they said they needed a snow cover, so assuming with the winter that we're having, will this contract, will this rate stay the same for next year? Will it carry over?
I don't have an answer for that. We're certainly praying for a light snow cover so that we can get this done sometime in the next four to six weeks. That remains to be seen whether the cost would remain the same. My assumption is that yes, it would.
Okay.
But that's an assumption on my part.
Okay. I just was curious on that.
But if there's no snow, then there's no flyover?
If there's no snow, there would be an ineffectual flyover as we need the differentiation between the ground cover and the animals themselves to get a decent thermal imaging program.
I think, just for public knowledge, because I, some people might not know what this is, and correct me if I'm wrong, Richard, if my memory's correct, but they actually take pictures with two cameras. One is thermal, which is heat, it's a FLIR camera. The other is a high-resolution photo, and then they overlay the two so that when they get a heat print, they can actually look at it. But they like to have snow on the ground to get the, one, the good heat imprint of the animal, and two, the contrast of the brown animal against the white background.
So they get enough sense in the air from the heat of the animal to, wow.
Correct.
And it has to be done in the winter, obviously, when it's snow, and when the foliage is off the vegetation, vegetation's off the... the vegetation, uh, vegetation's off the-
And I would add that Malcolm McNabb, who's been working on this, can coordinate it with the Vineyard, who's actually going to do this, too. So I think we're kind of-
This is indeed a result of the Vineyard's activity in fostering this program. We are a tag-along, so the minute we get some snow, there'll be planes flying over Nantucket and the Vineyard continually for most of the day.
You can do that when they're here for the bomb runs. The unexploded ordinance is-
Helicopter be chasing up the truck.
No suggestions, please.
Thank you, Richard.
Libby, I think it's worth the next two of those, they're substantial contracts.
Question for Richard. Can you distinguish between the bucks and the does?
No. No, only if it's an antlered animal can we tell. And at this, at the rate this season's going, with the temperatures that we're having, antlers are being shed, and it may become problematic. It's not really an issue that we need to worry about, we're certainly just looking for a singular deer count. We're not that interested in separating male and female.
However, your camera is good enough to pick up?
We can certainly differentiate between antlerless and antlered deer, yes.
There you go.
Thank you.
All right. So back to the next two, Libby. Is Rachel going to just, I think, describe them, tell us a little bit? You know, I looked at these and said, hmm, and so I think it's worth an explanation.
Sure. These were two contracts we entered into as of July 2010. We did it under a couple circumstances. We were actually trying to get a therapy group at the time that backed out at the last minute. We went all around trying to find therapy services for the island home. We had these two individuals step forward that were willing to take their time and do that for us. We also have a slight contract with the Cottage Hospital to provide only physical and speech therapy. We often only use them for speech therapy because they're never quite available to send people over to the island home. They have a backlog as it is. When these two contracts were entered into, we really had no true gauge at what we could do or where we would be in three years related to Medicare, and we kind of based them more on FY '09 and where we were in '10. Just for one area, I can tell you that we increased between FY '10 and FY '11 63.5% in our expenses and possibly related revenue. I don't have that actual percentage. Basically, the way I want to look at these contracts is we're halfway through the contract years, we're about a year and a half through. We're about hitting our maximum projected amount. We just estimated that if we double it, we should be okay for the end of it, and I would like to look at these contracts as we've greatly exceeded our expectations as of July 2010 from where we are. I know you've probably heard me repeatedly say in our budget presentations that our Medicare's doing great, we're increasing our revenue, we keep going up, and of course, that brings along this expense.
So, does that mean in a sense when the service is rendered, there's a billing process for that service-
Yes.
That in effect covers the expense side?
Yes.
So we're sort of even up?
Mm-hmm. They bill us at an hourly rate, and sometimes, just based on the evaluation, the type of evaluation, there's certain rates that we can bill for. They bill us privately, we bill Medicare.
Whitey?
On an individual basis, do you make money or do you lose money?
I would actually say we probably make money, but for me to figure out how much money, I would really have to take a look at it. We might break even on Medicare. Off the top of my head, I couldn't particularly tell you that, though.
But it looks like that.
It does look like that, yeah.
Have you made an analysis of how much therapy you need?
I'm sorry, can you repeat?
You made an analysis as to how much therapy you need?
That would kind of be hard to do because it basically just depends on the residents we have in the facility at the time. If we get an influx of three or four short-term admissions, then we're going to need a lot of therapy. Sometimes we go a month without any short-term admissions, and we just have the basic residents that are there that are only, get therapy when they have a declining condition. We could do an analysis, we have a consultant who does come and could probably provide that for us. I just don't know that offhand.
Then how did you determine your $360,000?
Because we're halfway through the contract years, we're about a year and a half in. It's a three-year contract, and we're just about at the maximum projected amount as originally guesstimated. We just assumed, talking with our therapist and what our current census has been and where we currently are with our expenses, we kind of assumed that if we just double it, we're safe in case we do have that influx. We will have the funds there so I don't have to come back and say we're exceeding our contract again.
Did the therapist charge you market rates?
I don't particularly know what the market rates are, but I would assume that because they are private therapists, that we had to offer them competitive rates at the time.
So you went up with an RFP?
No. These, I've spoken with Diane O'Neill about it in relation to a lot of this stuff and in regards to these type of contracts. Healthcare-related, pharmacies, therapists, physicians, things of that nature, you don't actually have to go out to bid or offer RFP for these.
Do you think it might be useful to go out with an RFP?
I think that possibly when these contracts are expired, we could potentially do that. My only concern with that is, is that these two therapists have grown with us and our consultant through the years in Medicare, and they are just as experienced as we are, and we would really need somebody that is in the middle of doing this stuff to be able to step into their shoes and get our reimbursement rates where we've got them now. There's not many people on the island. I don't know if there are any, to be honest with you. We kind of grew them into our facility, so their expertise is really valuable to us.
Bobby?
Rachel, would you say pretty comfortably, are you pretty comfortable with the fact that we don't lose money on this? We at least break even and we might make a little money?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
We're in and out, pretty much. All right. So I think in essence, in sort of picking up on Whitey's point, when the contracts reach their expiration date, you'll kind of review what the best process will be.
Mm-hmm.
We'll address that issue then, Whitey, or the island home, though.
Yes.
Just one question.
Patty?
I would guess, too, that the reimbursement has some sort of, you know, sort of limit in terms of what they're willing to give back, so the rate must be within a range that's-
Yes.
That's at least accepted by the reimbursement, so.
We're kind, we're slightly looking at it right now. For those members that don't have Medicare A or B, that are solely private when they provide these services, we do have a rate sheet for them that they receive on admission. In reviewing of our private rates and as few other things, these numbers came up because our Medicare reimbursement rates changed. And what we're now doing is with Sue Ballister, we're kind of reviewing those rates and realizing that the rates that we set for those private people are way below where they should be, what our actual cost is, and in relation to the rates that we get reimbursed. So maybe in sometime in the future, you will actually see the breakdown of what we'd like to charge, what our cost is, and what the Medicare reimburses us for.
Okay. Thanks.
$360,000, that would be for three years, right?
Yes.
So, how many therapists do you have for $120,000?
One PT. One person.
That's a pretty good salary.
Not really.
$120,000? Are they full-time?
They come when we need them. They come in the morning, evening, night, they work around their own business schedules.
Did you say they bill out at an hourly rate, right?
They bill out an hourly rate.
So if there isn't a need for the service, they wouldn't bill?
Absolutely.
I mean, if they show up, they'll bill whatever the standard rate is. So, Whitey, it's a little, I understand, I mean, that's why I sort of looked at these and said, well, that's interesting.
Yeah, we don't pay them a weekly paycheck. We pay them based on the services they provide.
Right. Just so I'm clear on this, they only get paid when they're there, and right now, we have a lot of patients who need their care.
Mm-hmm.
And that's why you've accelerated the amount of money you paid them because you anticipated, say, 10 patients, and you might have 15.
Yeah.
So you've, you need to have this extra money to fund it.
Yeah. We've really gotten a lot more competitive and a lot more aggressive with Medicare than we were in the past. And in doing that prior, I would say that, you know, when the same patient, we might have only been having them seen two to three times a week by PT and OT. Now, I can't remember in the past three months that we've had that frequency. They're always at five times a week for both. So one patient is receiving 10 sessions by physical therapy and occupational therapy. That's 20 sessions, one week, one patient.
Gotcha.
Or 10 sessions, one week, one patient.
But in any case, in any case, each session is billed to Medicare and-
Each session could be anywhere between 15 minutes to an hour, so yes.
Okay. Any further questions? All right.
Motion to approve?
Yeah, we'll approve those contracts if there's no objection. Great. All right. Back to our agenda, and the next item on our agenda, we have citizen departmental requests and items, these are real estate matters, 1, 2, 3, and 4. Andrew Vors is here to take us, but they're all related to the same properties, and we're coming to a, we think, a successful conclusion to a long process for our One Big Beach and related matters. For really, Andrew, is this the last properties of the original Surfside Six, or whatever we call them?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is the property that, if you go way back to the 1999 lawsuit against the town for the original, or against the county, I believe, in the original matter, this was the primary litigant to that. So we've come a long way here. I know that the board has, remembers our various and long negotiations with the Byrd and Chandler family. They have been very critical to this process. I think Kara Byrd deserves some special credit for all the time that she put into this. As you said, these four items are somewhat interrelated. The first item is for the town to accept a grant of one, two One Big Beach easement areas, and you can see that clearly shown on the map here. First one is 25,000 square feet, so it's over a half acre. And the next slide shows the companion, 9,375. In between is a portion of what was Boulevard Avenue, Boulevard, which bisected their property. That has been dedicated to open space, and at least to the, to the west now, we have continuous access back pretty much to the stairway at Nonnantum. So, the first action for you tonight is to accept the grant of the One Big Beach easement.
So, board, would there be a motion to accept the One Big Beach easement from the party here?
So moved.
Mr. Willauer, second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And the next one, Andrew?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next one, and again, your, the authority for these actions goes to the special town meeting of 2003, Article 1. So, again, this has been a long time coming here, but if we would go to the first slide, This is for a parcel of land 36B1, which is part of Harriet Street. We've conveyed the westerly portion of this already, and this is the portion of it above the bank. You can see the line runs at a midpoint between the coastal bank. So this portion of the paper street would be released to the Chandler Byrds.
Again, just to remind everybody, this is sort of, a little bit goes here, a little bit comes here. The One Big Beach comes close to the ocean, and complicated, but I think the board's been through a number of sessions on this and feels it's a good equitable solution to what we're doing. So in this case, Andrew, we need to have a motion to, for execution of the purchase and sale agreement and the quick claim deed?
Correct.
And the settlement statement. Do we have such a motion?
So moved.
So moved, seconded?
Second.
Further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The next one?
The next one, and it shows on this map, is parcel 36C1, which is the western portion of what was an extension of Boulevard from Nobodyer Ave down to the water. As I said, the southern part, that's basically below coastal bank, is retained by the town, and this part would be released also to the Chancellors. And as you said, Mr. Chairman, this also settles all outstanding litigation, and I think basically all parties leave the table satisfied with the arrangement.
So we would need another motion to execute the purchase and sale agreement, quick claim deed, and settlement statement for these town-owned properties in the yard sale known as parcel 36B-1.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, and further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, Andrew, the next one?
Last parcel, Mr. Chairman, is parcel 19B1.
Tape change.
Sorry, we got a tape change. Thank you, Libby.
I remind, I noticed when we were up there that the other cameras are on us, too, tonight.
Oh, we had double duty?
We are, we are being filmed by the ceiling cameras as well.
So for those who haven't seen, the Board of Health met with the Board of Selectmen, what, a week ago?
Right.
And the tape of that meeting, which was done by these cameras up here-
Right.
-is online, and I don't know what the website is. Anyway, it's, it's a different visual than we're used to seeing, and for those who haven't seen it, it comes across, I thought, very nicely.
What I was seeing up in the back, there's a lot of close-ups, just to keep in mind, and other kinds of technology we haven't had before, so.
So we better be careful.
Exactly.
It, it's online, it isn't Channel 18.
No, I, it's not on 18 yet, it will once the hookups are there, but right now, it's a, he loaded the file up someplace. I don't know where it is, but if you click the button, it plays back and fills your computer screen. It's very nice.
It's not on demand yet, but I'm sure we'll get there.
Yeah, well, it's almost on demand, you just log in and there it is.
There you go.
Andrew, sorry for the diversion.
That's okay.
The tape's back on, and we're on to item four.
The last parcel is parcel 19B-1, eastern half of Boulevard.
So we, again, are looking for a motion again to, for the execution of the purchase and sale agreement, the quick claim deed, and settlement statement for town-owned yard sale parcel known as, in this case, 19B-1. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Made by Mr. Willauer, seconded by Mr. DeCosta. Any further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And thank you to the Byrds. As Andrew said, it's been a long process, and this is a real benefit to the community to get it done, so it works for everybody. Next item on our agenda is a report from the, on the Human Services and the Council for Human Services with recommendations for the health and human service funding for 2013.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to recuse myself.
Okay. Noted that Mr. Willauer will step into the audience. And Libby, can I turn to you to help set this up or introduce it for us?
Sure. As the board may recall, this year, we tried a different process for the determination of the allocation of funds from the annual amount that the town sets aside for health and human services. And we, even though it's exempt from 30B, these services, we decided to issue an RFP to more focus the process on the specific services that the town would want to have provided by, by various agencies in accordance with the Community Needs Assessment. And so that process occurred, and there was a bit of a learning process, I would say, but we got through it, and the Contract Review Committee and the Council met quite extensively to go through the proposals and made it through the process, and we have Pam Miriam and Mary Warrow here, I think, to give us the report and answer any questions of the board.
Okay. Pam, you going to address us on this?
Sure.
Just so everybody knows, in our packet, we had a full report and a couple of spreadsheets outlining the town's appropriations under these articles in past years and the recommendation for this year, so.
Sure, that would be helpful. Hi, yes, I'm Pam Miriam, Director of Human Services for the Town of Nantucket. The Contract Review Committee is a committee that is, comes out of the Council of Human Services, and we began working on this in December. I think worked fairly quickly with some long sessions, but did get to the point where we are. We worked with the same level funding from last year, $317,883, which was a fun little amount to work with, that $883. What you have before you in your packets is the independent report and recommendations of the Contract Review Committee. This report is submitted to the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee, and eventually is an article in town meeting. The CRC is also a subcommittee of the Council of Human Services, the report is also shared with the Council. You found in your packet several attachments. One is a copy of the Code, Chapter 12, which the CRC is based on. And second attachment, the Community Needs Statement, that was a one-page statement that just broke down very simply basic community needs. It was a summary of a report done by the Council for Human Services in 2010. When you get into the meat of the report that was prepared, you'll see the analysis and rationale for the CRC recommendation, and that is the one that's broken up by recipient. And also, you have a spreadsheet, as Chairman Atherton mentioned, for prior history. It was a different, well, for me, this was the first time I was involved in the CRC, so it wasn't different for me, but it was different for the committee and for those who were applying with the RFP process. We're going to go back into conversation, decide if this is certainly the best way to go forward, we're not sure it is. It was sort of a round peg in a square hole. As with an RFP, everyone should be bidding on the same work, and of course, as you all know, even just by looking at the people who are awarded funding, these are 10 totally different entities giving 10 different services. So, we're going to have to talk that out for next year. We did not have Nantucket Cottage Hospital this year, or the Alliance for Substance Abuse Prevention, so we did have one new applicant this year, Small Friends of Nantucket, So, we did have one new applicant this year, Small Friends of Nantucket, and then we took the rest of the money and reallocated it, so we still ended up using the same funding. You'll also see that the requested funding of $441,555 was quite a bit over what we were allowed to award. We do hope that the entities are pleased with what they're going to get. We are going to be following them a lot differently. They, the entities give quarterly reports, um, and they've been basic quarterly reports, but we are going to expand on that with the committee and with myself. They're going to be more streamlined and, but also more detailed, depending on which entity is reporting. It's not a one-size-fits-all report, it can't possibly work that way. And we'll be going out into where we can, uh, into their work sites and seeing how the work is done, and also asking for community satisfaction, um, reports and any other reports that they may give to parent agencies they may have and, and such as that. If you have any questions, Mary Warrow is the Chair of the CRC and, um, did 90% of the work on this. I, I merely was there for the learning and some advisement and editing and preparation. But, um, I think between the two of us, we can probably answer any question you might have.
Board members, any questions or comments? You know, I'd just make one comment that I thought the, uh, there was sort of more written explanation of why we are recommending what we recommended, and I found that helpful and instructive. And just to remind people, it is available in our packet, so it's all up there for people to look at. Bobby, you all set?
I am.
Just one comment as well, Mr. Chairman. In terms of the community needs, I'm trying to go back to that particular, um, chart. And you, you noted that this was from 2010, I believe, right?
Yes.
Just, as we go through the process, I imagine, I don't know what your, um, you know, expectation is in terms of that assessment, and, but as you go through that, the Council, I should say, it would be nice to have at least some dialogue with the Board of Selectmen with respect to the findings and, you know, what the next steps are, because we all know these, these assessments are not only critical, but they change rapidly depending on community need. And it would be great, in my opinion, to sort of hear from the Council through the year of what they're doing to sort of update the assessment, uh, what they may be finding about the community, things of that nature.
We will be doing that, but I think there may be a different approach in working with, um, the Nantucket Healthy Community Collaborative?
Yeah.
Which the Council works very closely with. The Collaborative is, is looking at a, uh, community asset mapping, which is the, instead of saying, "This is what the community needs," it comes out with, "This is what the community has," so our approach may change a little. This is sort of a, a new way of doing business, which actually reaches more people. Um, there are resources out there that we're not even aware of. You know, we know what's needed, but we also are finding with the people who are using the neighborhood asset mapping that the resources are there, we're just not tapping them yet.
I, I was intrigued with the, the Nantucket Access Network, I guess, has now changed their name. That whole discussion might be something we, we should hear more about, because I know, while, um, it's great that the groups are all working together, you know, we are kind of in the loop in terms of approval, and in, in my, you know, sense, it's, like Rick said, this is a great presentation for me, this is a lot of good information, but I wouldn't mind hearing about it as the year goes on.
Yeah, and especially as they get started for next year, the budget cycle, we ought to sort of get this set up for in the middle of the summer or something.
Right.
And then we're all sort of on the same page.
Okay.
Yes, you have, Mary, you have a comment?
I just wanted to add to what, what Pam has said in response to your, your question. We also attached a copy of the, of the bylaw that was passed last year, and one of the duties of the, of the Council for Human Services is to conduct studies and make recommendations to town administration and the Board of Selectmen on efficient and cost-effective methods for coordination and delivery of human services, and to conduct public hearings to assess the human services' needs for health and welfare of the residents of the town and make reports and recommendations based on that. So, that's what's contemplated and, and although we have not, we've been.
One thing at a time, Mary, I completely understand.
Um, but that is, that is what, the framework of what we wanted to do. And with respect to the Nantucket AIDS Network, I do think we need to do a little more work on, uh, on that, on that proposal. We, we did receive, uh, a, a proposal from them to do this information and referral service, which we were very interested in doing. I, I think it, we made a recommendation without fully understanding what their intentions were with respect to the expenditure of, of funding. We, we have allocated, I think, $10,000 for the, um, for the HIV testing, which is their traditional services.
Right.
And the, uh, and, and the rest of the money for the, for a startup plan, because we didn't really see a good, we didn't see as much detail as we wished to see.
Mm-huh.
Uh, I think they would like to, um, have all of the money to be used for the startup plan, and they will seek funding, they would be willing to seek funding. That's not the recommendation that we have made.
Mm-huh.
Although, a part of that is because we didn't really understand what the, what the thing was. Which leads into what Pam was saying, that I think the, going, going back a little bit to the type of process that was used before, where we're actually negotiating with the vent, with the, with potential providers as to exactly what, how they would tailor their services to meet what, what, what is seen by the community as a need would be, would be helpful. So, I hope that in approving this, that the Board would approve our going back to exploring not, not a strict 30B solicitation process, but rather one that would incorporate some features of that, but live more flexibility. And I also hope that you would approve our use of a, of the grant agreement that we developed last year, which was much more tailored to this type of service and to monitoring.
One other thing, I, I might as well make a plug as well for the Board of Health, because I think that having integration between the Council for Human Services and sort of a, a sense of public health in where we're going, especially now with an independent Board, that would be something that I would like to see us work a little bit on as well, so.
That's a very good point. I think we could incorporate that and possibly expand to include the Board of Health in discussions and.
Right. Yeah. Thank you. Thanks for.
Okay, great. Um, so, any other questions? I, I think what we would like, a, a resolution of the Board to, uh, recommend that the, uh, proposals go forward to the Finance Committee into town meeting. And I'm not sure we're prepared to act yet on next year's process, we'd probably like to have a little dialogue on that, so.
Do you need a motion?
I think we might have a motion.
So moved.
So moved.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So, those who move along, thank you both very much for a process well done. And the next item, uh, on our agenda tonight is the public hearing, which we discussed earlier, and now.
Mr. Chairman, I just would like you to note that I'm recusing myself from this matter.
Okay.
Bill Little's on my board.
Okay, so Patty's recu, now, help me again, are we going to open and then continue or just continue?
Continue with our.
All right, so, we need a motion, Bobby, to continue this matter till March 7.
Is that the date?
Motion to continue the matter to March 7.
Thank you, a second, Whitey.
Uh, what are we continuing here?
The HTC.
The HTC Appeal.
Oh, yes.
And the parties hopefully will come to an agreement by then, so there's a second. Any further discussion, all in favor, say aye, and note that Patty recused. Okay? Thank you very much, Sarah, for saving all that time for us. Now, we come to the Town Managers Reports section of our agenda. Libby?
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to update you guys and remind you of some upcoming matters on your agendas. As we mentioned earlier, there's no Board meeting next week. We don't typically meet the fifth Wednesday of the month. The following Wednesday, March 7th, we've just continued the HTC Appeal, and that is the day that you are scheduled to adopt your recommendations and/or comments to town meeting warrant articles. And later that week, the warrant with motions and any comments of the Finance Committee and the Board go to the printer in order to meet the charter requirements. We've got to get the document to the printer by the end of that week so that it can be printed and mailed. Um, we also have a presentation that evening, March 7th, from the firm that's done our, um, every other year OPEB study, which is Other Post-Employment Benefits. And I think we have another wind turbine discussion, the.
So, if we end up with too long an agenda, maybe we review some of that, but let's, you know.
Um, March 14th, right now, you have, more will surface, but right now, you have, um, a report from Island Home, second quarter, or third, I guess, actually, of fiscal 12, um, of their budget. And the following week, we have public hearings and Solid Waste and Sewer Enterprise Fund quarterly updates.
So, we got some numbers coming our way.
We do. And at the end of that month, we have, again, County, NRTA, and Board, again, we continue the Humming Pond Road vote, bike path easement vote, to March 28th. And a bunch of other real estate items. And that's it at the moment, but other items will surface. And I do want to remind you and everybody else, members of the public, that town meeting starts this year on Saturday, March 31st, at 8:30 a.m. at Nantucket High School. We are auditorium, we are getting out an info sheet, I've been working with the moderator on it.
Yeah, you, you've had a committee helping you out with some ideas and stuff.
I had a kind of a, a little work, work group, yep.
Uh, you were going very rapidly. Uh, March 7th is when you go to press?
The end of that week. March 7th is the date that the Board is scheduled to adopt its recommendations and comments.
Okay, so the Board adopts, how about the FinCom?
They're scheduled to adopt on March 6th, or better yet, March 5th.
So, the 9th is, has to be printed by the 9th, Friday the 9th.
Yep, and we need some time to format, which can take a little while on the 8th.
So, tonight's, uh, later on the agenda, we do have a, a discussion of the warrant articles, and I think it's up to the Board to sort of think about which ones they wish to comment on and what their positions may well be on those articles. And we don't have to vote on those tonight, but March 7, if we want to get a comment in the warrant, we're going to have to be ready to act at that time.
Are we going through them all tonight, or we're just going to go through them on our own?
I, I think we'll get to that item, and Bobby, I don't know if we have to go through every one, but there are obviously some key ones, and hopefully, they're ones that you may have an interest in or any one of us do, and we get those out on the table, so. But that's later on the agenda. All right, Libby?
That's it.
That's it. So, the next section is what we call Selectmen Reports and Comments, and the first item is a discussion regarding the proposed wind turbine. And people will remember, a few weeks ago, the, uh, Board asked to set up a process where it would have an opportunity to ask questions and hear some of the different points of view, and we divided that process into sort of three areas. And tonight's discussion is to focus on the financial and risk assessments of their, of the outlook for the wind turbine. I understand we have representatives tonight from the, uh, Nantucket Energy or the town's consultant to sort of review the current, uh, pro forma, and we have some folks who may have a different point of view, so we'll have at least two people address the Board and have an opportunity to ask questions after that. Does that work for everybody? So, why don't we start over here? Mr. Stover, you're, uh, the stand-in Chair of the Financial Subcommittee of the Nantucket Energy Study Committee. Do I have that?
I'm John Stover, yes, and it is the, uh, I am the stand-in Chair for the, the Risk Subcommittee, for the Energy Study Committee. Um, I have a somewhat prepared statement that I'd like to read, if I may.
Sure.
Um, first of all, the Energy Study Committee was charged by the Board of Selectmen to evaluate the economics of the Maticket Wind Turbine project. Our evaluation before you, which I believe you have packets with this information in front of you.
We do.
Uh, includes the following: analysis of the wind data at the Maticket site, review of electricity output that can be generated from this wind, value of electricity sold through the net metering program, the value of renewable energy credits, annual operating and maintenance costs, reasonable annual contribution to a reserve fund, and capital costs for purchase and installation of the facility. The Energy Study Committee has a high degree of confidence that the information in front of you is extremely accurate. There may be minor adjustments over time, and we will continue to up to, update the report as appropriate. As an example, we have revised the average wind speed estimate from 8.56 to 8.47 meters per second, and that is reflected in the supplemental documents provided to you, e.g. the pro forma. We further believe that based on our projections for, for several reasonable scenarios, that the Maticket Wind Turbine project will produce positive cash throws throughout its entire Next, I would like to thank the Common Sense, the Nantucket Group for their interest in the project. It has certainly raised the awareness level of the project and promoted healthy discussion of the issues and taken over several meetings. In addition to that, I'd like to also thank the Board of Selectmen for appointing me to this committee. It has been a much more interesting endeavor than I ever anticipated.
That's an understatement, it's called.
That is an understatement. Gets the point across. Where was I? And I particularly like to thank, um, I don't know if this is appropriate to do that, but I hope it is, but I would like to particularly thank you, Mr. Atherton and Mr. DeCosta, because each of you put in extra effort, as, as far as I could see, in terms of really tracking down and trying to understand these issues, which are not simple issues, they're, they're somewhat complex. And you gave it a real thorough effort, I think.
More than we ever wanted to know.
Probably another understatement.
Yep.
Uh, and particularly, I'd like to thank Mr. DeCosta, because Mr. DeCosta made several valid points regarding the stated project's capital, capacity factor, that frankly, I agreed with his comments, particularly that the capacity factor was higher than other projects in Southern New England, perhaps even in a wider range than that, but at least in Southern New England. And it begged the question, why were our projections so much higher than everyone else's? And I personally jumped in Mr. DeCosta's boat, no pun intended, Bobby. I personally jumped in Mr. DeCosta's boat in this issue and pursued the discussion with our consultants. I was not convinced for quite a while. Then, our own Mr. Frank Kaminski took the lead regarding the Nantucket's wind resources. Frank is a retired professor of engineering at the University of Massachusetts, and he specialized in analyzing wind data from a statistical perspective. He's been doing this for over 30 years. He's a fellow who, we're very fortunate to have him here and able to help us understand this data and to be able to accurately predict what this data means to us. So, with that, Frank, I'd like to call on you, if you'd be kind enough, to give us a little bit of a discussion about the wind resource that we have here on the Nantucket, and what is so special about it.
Okay. Uh, thank you. Uh, I'm Frank Kaminski, I'm a resident of the island, I've been here since, uh, 1970, essentially, uh, part-time and then full-time from 2000. The, the economic analysis of this project really depends on the wind resource at the site. And, and generally, when you're looking at a wind turbine, you don't have very good data to work with. But at the, the landfill, we have probably the most outstanding data that I have ever seen, and I'd like to just take a few minutes to just illustrate what we have for a data set, because everything we did relies on this data set. And, uh, I, in, in August of 2005, a group from the Renewable Energy Lab at the University of Massachusetts instrumented the DPW tower at the site. And, and I'm just going to go through quickly what they did. They put two anemometers at 58 meters above ground level and one wind direction vein. Then they went up to 68 meters, they put two anemometers and one wind direction vein. Then they went up to 99 meters and did the same thing. And over a period of a year, every two seconds, they sampled the wind, and then every 10 minutes, they computed an average wind speed. So, we ended up with thousands of 10-minute averages, and it turned out that they had 99.99% recovery of all the data. Now, this is incredible data, because what it does, it allows us to understand how the winds increase with height. It also allows us to understand how the winds vary within a particular year, and so, we really feel comfortable about our estimates of what the annual energy is going to be. And then, working with SED, uh, we worked with the, uh, tower in Buzzards Bay, there's a 93-foot tower there that had 14 years of data. And we used that data to get estimates of the annual averages at the Maticket landfill. And so, now, we know how the wind varies from year to year at the landfill, we know how it varies up and down at the landfill, and we know how it varies within a particular year. And, as I said, this is an incredible data set, and I think it really helped us to come up with, uh, some good estimates of what the energy is going to be. And, you know, John's going to go through, uh, how we use that data in our economic analysis.
Thank you. Thank you, Frank. So, the, the wind data is just incredible, and having that sort of data right on the site is very unusual, and we've got it for actually over a year, but we only took one year of the data. Next, as I mentioned earlier, Selectmen DeCosta asked. Next, as I mentioned earlier, Selectman DeCosta asked some very specific questions regarding the capacity factor of known wind turbines, and how those machines would be expected to perform in the Nantucket. It was an effort to try and understand why the capacity factor at, for instance, the Mass Maritime facility would, how that would compare to something on the Nantucket, if we actually took that machine and put it on the Nantucket. So, we haven't ignored that question, Bobby, and we've been working on it, and we do have some answers. In fact, I think you may have the answers in the packet, and there's an awful lot of information there, but I believe you do have it.
Yeah, just so people understand, again, in our online packets, which are available to anybody, we received an addendum today that had something like 67 pages, so lots of information.
Awful numbers.
And all of our members have promised, well, it's a little tough to get through all 67 between the time we got in tonight, but we are dedicated to trying to make sure we get a grasp of all of that. But anyway, the main point is for the public, there's lots of data online available for anybody to look at.
So in response to Mr. DeCosta's question, we did put our consultants to work, trying to analyze this information, as I said, there is a summary in the packet of information that you have. But if you don't mind, what I would like to do at this point is to have Mr. Aronson, who is with us right now, talk to you a little bit about what the results are, and just what the comparison is, so that we can answer your question, Mr. DeCosta. Is that acceptable, to do that at this point?
I think you're underway. Hi, George.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is George Aronson, I'm a principal of Commonwealth Resource Management Corporation. I will say first that many of the numbers on the table were actually created by SED, it's another firm that is not.
Hold on a second, please.
Is this the addendum, or is this the?
Yes.
This is, we're in the addendum now?
Why don't you take a minute to show, Mr. DeCosta, what this table looks like, so you might have a clue.
I'm pretty sure. Okay, yeah, I got to go to you, Dan.
The iPads are great, but when you have to switch from folder A to folder B, and then find page 22 out of 67, it's not always, it's not always so simple.
Okay.
And Bobby, when you find the page number, let me know.
While we're waiting, I'll just say that the.
One more time, George? Let me make sure I'm on the right one. 65 of 74.
65 of the addendum this afternoon.
Okay, we're good.
Yeah.
Thank you, George.
Does everybody else have the page number, who wants to get there?
Got it.
Great. This table was put together with numbers from David Strong of SED. David could not be here tonight, I will be, explain it in his place. I am familiar with the numbers, and generally, how they were derived. There may be specific questions that come up, that I may have to get back to you after consulting with David. What we tried to do was to reconcile the 18% capacity factor that's experienced at the Mass Maritime Vestas V-47 turbine, with the numbers that have been projected for the Matikit turbine in the Nantucket, and to isolate one by one, the different factors that go into the differences in those numbers. And so, as you look at the table, it's numbered 1 through 6, starting up top, and I'd actually like to focus on the column that says net output, because that's really what gets calculated, is how much electricity does the turbine actually put out, and the capacity factor is an artifact that is calculated after the fact. If you put a meter on it, the numbers that you've seen are about 1,040 megawatt-hours per year, for a 660 kilowatt turbine on a 50-meter tower, and that's a capacity factor of 18%. Take that same turbine, move it to the Matikit site at 50 meters, the net output would be estimated, using the model, the wind data that Frank spoke of, at 1,926 megawatt-hours per year, that corresponds to a capacity factor of 33%, just by moving the turbine from Mass Maritime to the Matikit site. If one were, but that's at 50 meters. If you were to raise the height of the same turbine for 50 meters to 71 meters, now you'd be putting out about 2397 megawatt-hours per year. Again, you can see the increase of wind speed, corresponding to the increase in height in the table, and now we're talking about a capacity factor of about 41%. And now, if you switch from a Vestas V-47, to a slightly more efficient turbine, the Powerwind PW-56, same wind speed, same height, now we're projecting output of about 3464 megawatt-hours per year, and about a 44% capacity factor. So what we've shown is that the fact that it's, the location is important, the height is important, and the efficiency of the turbine are important, and tried to give you some illustration of the relative importance of those factors.
Gotcha.
You can show us one going down to 25 meters.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
I don't have any doubt about these numbers, George, and Frank's information. I mean, it's been explained to me, I understand it completely, and mathematically, it makes sense. I guess I'm going to ask you for one more number, and that is, if we took the number of the wind speed at Mass Maritime, and we use the formula, not the actual now, I want to take the number and run it through the VSM numbers, what does the capacity factor come out at? Because my problem with this all along has been actual and projected, and I haven't seen a turbine yet that meets its projected wind capacity. And I don't doubt that with this height, and our wind speed, and the data that we have, which is very good from the tower, that the projected speeds are going to be at this. My concern is, what is the actual? And I'm going to throw this back to my real job, which is, you know, running a fishing boat, and I've gone through this for 40 years with diesel engine manufacturers, where they say they're going to make 450 horsepower, and the reality is, they make about 390 wide open. So, you know, maybe on a bench somewhere, in a perfect world, where they put perfect fuel and perfect air and everything into that motor, it does turn 450 horsepower. And that's what I, I would like to see that number, so that we can, then I can compare it to what it would do in the Nantucket. So in other words, if the wind speed in Buzzards Bay is 7 knots, or meters per second, or whatever it is, I don't know what it is, but I'm just using 7 as a number, and we run it through the same calculation, what does it come out at? Does it come out at 26? Does it come out at 18, exactly what they're getting? That's the number that I would like to see, just, that would help to ease my mind as to, okay, yes, it's going to do this here, or there is like a 7 or 8 or 10% difference between what the projected number is, and what the actual number is.
Okay, let me take three shots, and I don't know that I can answer your question. I can give you three points that will address it frankly the best I can, and that'll be up to you. The first problem is in getting the actual wind speed data in the, at the degree of detail that would be required to do the analysis at Mass Maritime, and frankly, we haven't been able to get that data. So, that the backcast, and as you recall, or you may know, that turbine was actually not purchased by Mass Maritime itself, it was in part a result of a number of state grants. So they did not go through the same projection process that we're going through here. So I guess it's, it is what it is, but I don't have the, we don't have the data to do that piece of the analysis that, obviously, you're very interested in seeing.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say that the, I think the question that Bob asked on the wind speed was, do we actually have the actual wind speed of that turbine over the past year? Is that your question?
No, no, when, like, we have a wind speed of, what is it now, 8.46 here?
8.47. Right, that's an average, but you're actually looking at a distribution, so the average isn't the only point that's important.
Okay, that's the average, but if we took, and I, maybe I'm losing something here, but I think we could go to the Buzzards Bay Tower, which we say we've got pretty good data from, and we could get a wind speed there, an average wind speed. I'm not holding you to the exact number on this, but take that number, say it's 7, 8, whatever it is, punch it in, and then compare it to what the, what the Mass Maritime has, because they're 26 miles from that tower, so that wind is pretty relevant to what they have. I just, I'm trying to get a difference in what projected and actual is.
Bobby, what I remember from.
Well, okay, I think I see what you're trying to get at, I'm not in a position to respond to you tonight, I could, that's why.
No, and I don't expect to get it tonight, I just, at some point, I'd like to see it. You know, I asked David Strong for this at one point, and I never heard another word from him, but I said, you know, how many of these projects have you done? And he told me quite a few, and I said, well, I'd like you to just give me a number of what you projected, what was the projected winds, capacity factor, and what was the actual? I'm not holding you to it, but I just want to see, you know, okay, you took the numbers, you did it, what was it, and what did you actually get? Because just from the information that I've gathered, it doesn't seem like any of them come, any of them meet their projected, and everyone's discusses that this is the projected, and we won't know the actual until it's in the field, so I just would like to get a somewhat of an idea.
Yeah, I think there is one.
Just to follow up, can I just do?
Sure.
I mean, my, what I recall from those discussions at the meeting, was that David told us repeatedly all the reasons why he could never get us that data. So I said, I got the idea, David, thanks, so you may, you may be able to reconstruct it, but the.
Not the full distribution.
Sales folks don't supply the information, so, and I think a lot of people built these, as George just said, independent of forecast, because they got grants, and they just build them, and they get whatever they get. Patty?
I'm going to take one more step, and also demonstrate that I'm not as well versed in the whole output and capacity issue, and ask for dollars and cents. I mean, when I do a risk analysis at the financial level, I want to know what, and you have Mass Maritime, what does it produce, how does the net metering work with respect to that particular site? I mean, what kind of dollars are they saving or not? And that, I think, is just as key a question, at least one that I would understand in more straightforwardly. Because, you know, while I understand we have a lot of wind, and I understand the higher you go, the better off you are, what I want to know is really what that means in terms of the risk.
Well, if I can, Mr. Chairman, just to give you a little update, Patty, and you guys interject, if I don't get this right, I'll be more than happy to be corrected. The dollar value is tied to the capacity factor. If it runs at 41 or 44%, then the dollar value projects out to be pretty good. If it runs at 30%, the dollar value doesn't predict out to be pretty good.
Well, see, and that's what I need in these kind of charts, because, you know, ultimately, that's the key and critical component. And I don't, and I don't even want to know pretty good, I don't want to know what it is, because there's a lot of investment here, and I know we've talked about how many years it's going to take to turn around, but the investment's not just in the structure, there's an impact on the community, there's, you know, there's other kinds of fallout, and I think we need those numbers to make that assessment.
Okay, if I can respond to two of the questions, which remain unanswered. One was the question of whether there are any turbines that have actually exceeded their projections, and in fact, there is one turbine that I'd like to give you as an example of, the Nantucket High School Wind Turbine exceeded its projection by about 6% in actual output from November 2011 to 2000, I'm sorry, 2010 through 2011. The Alteris feasibility report had projected 192 megawatt-hours, in fact, the actual turbine did over 200 megawatt-hours. So that's one data point for your interpretation. So I think that's one point.
George, do you know how much money they make from it? I mean, how much savings they have?
It's about, just under $40,000 per year. They have not been selling the renewable energy certificates, and we're about to put a process in place for them to do that, so that would add, I know, $6,000, $7,000, in addition to what they've been saving and avoided.
And the investment is close to zero.
Right. If we were to finance that, it would not cover itself.
Yeah, right. I think, but I think the other point being that a 100-kilowatt turbine, the capital costs for larger turbines are significantly lower per kilowatt, and it changes the economics substantially.
All right, further questions, or Bobby, you also? George?
Thank you, George.
John, back to you, are you guys, I mean, I think it's pretty clear, we have a pro forma that comes out of these calculations, and it shows what it shows, and then there's the pro forma that shows sort of if some of those assumptions are lowered, what the impact of the lowering of those assumptions is. John, are you going to tell us about that, or that's sort of what we have in our packet?
That is what you have in your packet, but I would like to try and address Patty's question a little bit, and this may not fly very well, I'm not sure, but we'll give it a try. Capacity factor really is just a computed number, it's not the answer. The real answer is, how many kilowatt-hours are going to be produced from a turbine, given the wind speed? And that turbine is a certified power curve that you look at, that's how you define it in terms of analytical terms. So given the wind, given the power, the certified power curve, which is actually certified based on test data in the field, it's supposed to be as good as we can get. I don't think it really, it doesn't completely answer your question, Bobby, but it's headed in that direction. And there's one more step to be able to answer your question, if we can actually get the data for Mass Maritime and compare those, because it's just one more piece in getting this puzzle to kind of glue together. But what really, for us, what's really, what we're really talking about here is, how good is the wind data? Most facilities do not even gather the wind data. If they do gather it, they get it from a meteorological tower that's maybe in the neighborhood, maybe not. We've got one that's right at the site. It can't get better. It's certain. Another comment, I think this might be beating the dead, did I answer your question at all?
No, I still'd like to see the financials, I mean.
It's actually, Patty, it's on page 8 of our packet.
Our packet?
Yeah, there's a breakdown of it.
Capacity factor, again, just to kind of beat this horse a little bit more, you could change, a capacity factor is the nameplate rating on the generator. The generator's not the turbine. The turbine is the other part that actually does the spinning, it spins the generator and makes the electricity. You can change the nameplate on a generator, increase it by 20%, and you will decrease your capacity factor significantly, by that 1 over 1.2%, you know? So, in simpler terms, just to use the numbers that I can actually multiply and divide in my head, if you doubled the nameplate, you would decrease your capacity factor by a factor of 2. So in this case, we go from 45 down to 22 and 1/2. And that's just by changing the nameplate, and nothing else would change, nothing. The kilowatt-hours are still going to be exactly the same, the revenues will still be exactly the same. What does change is, a bigger generator will cost you more money.
Right.
I think I've said everything I have to say at the moment.
Okay.
You have some questions? We'll try to answer them.
Bobby, go ahead.
I wasn't at the meeting when you talked about Cat 1 and Cat 2 turbines, so I'm not very familiar with it, John, I was wondering if you could bring me up to speed on that?
I'll do the best I can. Again, I'm not the engineer here, well, I am an engineer, but I'm not the engineer for the wind turbines. You're talking Cat 1 or capacity, or Category 1 turbine, or Category 2 turbines?
Yeah, I think that's what we're talking.
Okay. A Category 1 turb, there's a, I think it's an IEC standard that's in the industry that defines what a Category 1 turbine means, and what a Category 2 turbine means. This is going to go from memory, so the gist is, that a Category 1 turbine is basically designed to take much higher winds, up to 10 meters per second, is that?
Sometimes higher.
Sometimes higher, and the other thing that they're designed for is a much wider variability in the wind. So it's not just 10, but it's going from a low range to the high range, you get a lot more swings.
Gusty wind.
It's gustier. You also get some vertical flow, that's all part of determining whether it's a Category 1 or Category 2. Category 2 is defined as a turbine that's going to be looking at a maximum wind speed that is 8.5 meters per second, and we're right at that cusp with our turbine. You know, our wind data is for, 8.4, you know, it's 8.47, that's 8.5 in my book, at least as far as this discussion goes. So that's why it falls into a Class 2. Why is that significant? Because a Class 1 is that example that I gave you a little bit earlier about just getting a bigger nameplate on the generator? That's what ends up happening, you get a bigger nameplate, and you get a little more robust turbine, and the reason you get the more robust turbine is the blade, which is a big, long, flapping thing, you've got to make sure that that thing is fairly rigid. So, the only way to make it rigid with stronger winds is to make it shorter, or you make it really bulky. What they do is, they make it shorter.
John?
Yes?
I could just add in, you know, one illustrative example that might help illustrate, the Cape Wind is looking at Class 1 turbines in part because it's our understanding they have more turbulence, and different, and more variability in their wind than the Matikit site does. But if you did some analysis, if you pretended that the Cape Wind turbines had a Class 2 turbine instead of a Class 1, and then the Matikit turbine was a Class 1 instead of a Class 2, David Strong did an analysis to show that you would end up with about a 40% capacity factor in both cases, and that the difference between the two is in fact, because in fact, because the Matikit site has fewer gusts, fewer verticals and less variability in wind than the Cape Wind site, that that explains to a large degree the difference in the choice of turbines.
Could somebody send me an email or something that explains in detail the difference between a cat one and cat two because?
I can give you the website.
That'd be great. I just, I, I've got concerns about this and having been around the water a little while, I think that, you know, my concern is that we say we're going to have a cat, is it cat two, the higher?
Class two, yes.
And then we get a manufacturer and then he looks at Nantucket and the location and everything that goes on here and says, well, I'm not going to put a cat two in here, I'm going to put a cat one. And I know a lot of these things have been left to the determination of the actual install.
It's a valid point.
You know, I mean, the wind data was collected for one year and that one year, we didn't have any major storms in the winter and we didn't have any hurricanes, but I know when we build a house in Nantucket, and I've said this before, we have to put hurricane rated windows in it that can withstand a direct impact of up to 140 miles an hour and this is going to be there 20 years and the fact is, we're probably going to get a few good storms in a 20-year period. And I think that's what, that's one of my concerns, that the installer's going to say, yeah, we're not going to, we're not going to put anything less than a cat one in here.
Now, just to respond to how that process would play out, when, if the town voted to proceed with the project and requests for proposals were to put out to which the manufacturers would respond, those manufacturers would be given the wind data, et cetera, and the other information that's been developed and those manufacturers will say exactly what you said, whether they will agree to sell a class turb, two turbine or not. I guess the answer is if you put on an RFP and nobody meets the spec, then you don't go forward with the project.
Mr. Chairman?
Patty?
Can we take a minute and go through this chart on page eight, the financial chart?
Sure.
That must be me. Okay, well.
It's, let me give you the title, it's pro forma economic analysis.
Yes. Okay, I have both, in the packet, there should be two new full pro formas and then some summary sheets. Are you referring to the summary sheet?
I am, I'm not sure I am. I think I'm on the, I'm on the spreadsheet.
It's a spreadsheet.
Okay.
It's the 900.
Thank you.
I think it's the 900 limited to the 800 is what it says.
Yeah, and actually, this is the 900 one, so the one that we ought to actually look at, Patty, is the 800 because we have to dial.
Is that the for or after, is it?
There should be a.
Right. It should be a.
After it's?
Okay.
Nope. What page is it on?
Yep. Yeah, just to clarify, there are two pro formas. One is at the 900 kilowatt, full capacity, which would be the case where the town goes forward and elects to join the National Grid pool and there, and is allocated a full 900 kilowatts. The second would be a 800 kilowatt case in which the town elects not to do that, presuming that the net metering program goes forward on the basis of the 2 percent.
So which one are we going to look at?
And then the turbine is limited to an 800 kilowatt maximum capacity and that has the impact of reducing the output.
Oh, okay. So am I in the right one or the wrong one?
900 limited to?
You want page eight?
Okay.
Yeah, that's it, Patty.
I'm just, and part of this is just for my edification in terms of what the categories mean, George.
Okay.
Okay? And I'm looking at, if I don't keep bumping it away, on page eight, yes, two, under 200, 2013, you've got two categories, which I understand, revenue and expenses. And then you got two additional categories above those, quantities and prices. Now, that, that has to do with the wind in terms of the quantities, that's just a?
The quantities, yes. The, when it says you have a total electricity generation, so that in 2013, by dialing the turbine down to 800 kilowatts, you're looking at a net output of 32, 23 instead of 34. So the net output has dropped by about 220 megawatt hours, two out of 30 is about, about one out of 15, about 6 percent, 7 percent.
Okay, so I can, I can look through those and do some comparisons on the two different approaches as far as volume and prices are concerned. The revenue part, are the numbers in hundreds or is it just?
It's in thousands, yes.
Thousands, so it would be 303,000?
Yes.
Under, behind, I'm sorry, not meaning credits onsite?
Yes.
Okay, so, so we basically get down to a place where we've got revenues at 554,000?
That's correct.
And our expenses and we get all the way down to the bottom and we find that, that we've got a positive balance basically from the, from the revenues and our expenses? Is that how I'm reading it?
Yes.
Okay, so we've got as far as expenses are concerned, the expense for the debt service, I saw somewhere, now I'm not seeing it, but basically the
Line 38, yes.
Okay. So that's, that's construction. Does that include like who's operating it and that, those kinds of expenses?
Those expenses, the, the expenses of the operator are under the O and M expenses. The debt service includes the construction. It also includes paying the first two debt service payments during the time between when the turbine is ordered and when it, and when it's installed and making revenue.
So that's 31,000?
Uh.
Total?
No, that's, that's during the warranty period, which is the first year the O and M cost would be lower and that's 31,000 just for the, for the service and then 43,000 escalating in the subsequent years.
Okay, so, so basically, the O and M to me, 31,000 is personnel, it's everything that is repairs, anything that we need to sort of operate it?
Yes.
Okay. And, and so it's pretty low, basically?
Yeah, typically, these are capital intensive devices, yes.
Okay. And the debt service is the debt service and we come out with a positive. Now, what is the MPV on line 42?
Okay, what we've done is taken a net present value over a 20-year period of all of the net cash flow benefits in line 39. So that's discounting those, you know, taking into account the time value of money.
Right.
So that we're discounting by four and a quarter percent, which is the assumed interest rate that the town would pay on the financing.
Okay. So basically, you're trying to calculate over 20 years, what we're going to actually gain from all of this?
That's right. And we're not simply adding, we're also taking into account the time value.
Okay. Now, I would guess in the midst of all this, just as my final question, because I want to take a look at these numbers in more detail, I just wanted to make sure I understood what the categories were. You don't anticipate any kind of, you know, hurricane or major damage to the, to the, there's nothing factored in here contingency wise?
Well, what there is, if you look at line
Standard operating.
If you look at lines 67 through 71, there is a reserve fund.
Okay.
And there were two parts to that reserve fund.
Okay.
The first part is the assumption that the Mass Clean Energy Center grant, the second half of that, which is not yet being reimbursed and would only be reimbursable upon construction and entry into commercial operation. So if the town elects to go forward with the project, constructs and enters commercial operation, the town will get $171,000 back from the Mass Clean Energy Center. The presumption in the pro formas, that would immediately go into a reserve fund so that if there were a contingency of some sort that wasn't covered by insurance or warranty or whatever, that those funds would be available to cover costs to the town. And then the assumption is also going forward that every year, the town would make a contribution to add to that fund of $34,515 escalating with inflation. And so those two sources of funds would be available in the event of a contingent liability of the type you've mentioned that's not covered by insurance or by a warranty or otherwise.
Can I also ask, and this is not on your chart, but clearly, we've had issues in other communities with litigation and I don't know if you've done any kind of look, see at what that cost has been, but to a municipality that's been engaged in this, but I would like to see sort of some ballpark of what that might be as well.
I'm not a lawyer and I'm not the person to ask that question.
I'm sure there's numbers somewhere.
Well, I think if we want to ask, we could ask council, town council might help us, they would know or be able to find another town where there's been litigation, Patty.
Call for Almath.
Yeah, so it's available.
Okay. Thanks, George. I'm going to take another look at this and I may have questions, in which case we can.
Patty, I think it's good to go through this because there are a lot of numbers here and there's sort of the assumption we all can spend enough time and really get into them. It's helpful to sort of talk through what you're dealing with.
Right.
I mean, under this, under this scenario and we'll, you know, it comes down to 191,000 positive benefit in the first year and runs out and a lot of that depends on the fact that we're paying off a bond over 20 years instead of 10 years.
Right.
So for example, the debt service is a lot lower because of that and whether that's good to do or not, that's debatable and whether $191,000 is enough to sort of pay you for all the risks. There are lots of risks, it may not come out this way and then there are a lot of community issues that are not based on the numbers.
Well, and even the, even the operating, I don't know if there's more detail, but 31,000 just seems low to me for, for anything. But, you know, again, you said it's capital, I mean, it's intensive, you know, I'm not sure there's much in the way of personnel, but I kind of like to see a breakout more on the expenses because I think we've done a lot to sort of, especially with the first couple of categories, to look at the revenue because we've looked at the various machines and we've looked what the wind generation can be, but I'd really like to see some costs that may be from a community that's actually operating one.
Yeah, I know, for example, a hull wind turbine has a line item of about $25,000 per year for that item for a one and a half megawatt turbine. These numbers, again, these are numbers from SED, not from CRMC, so I'm not the person to give you the next level of detail on that, but we do appreciate that if it is available, that you should have it. One other point if I can make and then I'll take your questions if I may. There are also in the packet, and I don't know if you focused on them, some summary sheets of various sensitivity cases in which we've tried to vary some assumptions one by one and I just wanted to bring that to your attention, both for the 900 kilowatt turbine in full and for the 800 kilowatt turbine. So you can see those. We've looked at a P90 case, which is a low wind case. We've looked at a lower price for the renewable energy certificates. We've looked at a higher O and M cost, just juicing it up by 50 percent arbitrarily. And then we looked at combination cases in which we did all three.
So maybe, George, a way to highlight that because they're, they're all here, but for us, if you take the number Patty was just pointing to and the cash flow, the first year is 191. If you go to the scenario which you've run, which takes all those and adds them together, what's the cash flow in that scenario?
Okay, the worst case that we've done, I don't have the first year, what I have pulled out as a metric is the average over 20 years.
All right, pick, pick a number.
Okay.
It just gives us an order of magnitude so we know what we're talking about.
Okay, so the base case of a 1,900 kilowatt was, the net cash flow average was about 277,000 a year. The worst case, which was the all of the above case for the 800 kilowatt constrained turbine was about 126,000 per year constrained. And another way to look at that is the, so that would be actually with an output down to 2986, which is actually 15 percent below.
Yeah, you itemize all the issues that get to that.
So that drops the capacity factor down to around 25 percent?
No, it would drop the capacity down to 85 percent of 44 percent.
Things like 40, George?
Which is, I think, high, high 30s.
High 30s.
So he's not going all the way down, but he's taking a care cut in about six different criteria or whatever the number was.
Yeah, and one other thing I would mention is we did, for all these pro formas, reduce the energy prices as had been discussed, which means that the commodity cost is flat for 20 years and the delivery cost only escalates with the
And in yours, you didn't have a scenario that moved the energy cost down, you just left that, I'm trying to remember, you left that one the same or did you go down in one of your scenarios?
No, we, we left it flat. I think that consensus in the industry is that to some extent, electricity prices in 2012 have overshot.
And that's, Patty, that's an important variable because if energy prices go down, it'll be another hit that's not built in. You don't know the answer. Bobby, and then I'll come to you, Whitey.
George, do you know, the hull turbine, do they have, do they just sub out all of their checkups on it or do they have someone on staff in the town that oversees their?
I don't know. They have a municipal utility, which puts them in a slightly different category, but I do not know the specific answer to that question.
Do you know it?
They have a service plan with the manufacturers, five years, 10 years.
Because I, when I talked to the guys, the manager at Mass Maritime, that's what they have as well. The one thing that he told me to be careful of was that they, the first five years, it was very reasonable and then it got very expensive after five years. It went from 9,600, excuse me, 12,500 the first year, first five years, to 56,000 the second five years. And they ended up doing a, just a T and M that was 10,000 a year, but then they said every time they had to have someone come, it cost them more money, so.
Let's break it to you, Whitey.
Yeah, I, you made it.
You made a comment about capacity factors showing your summary chart. Actually, your capacity factors wouldn't vary, it's just your costs vary.
Well, the one thing is if you drop, if you constrain the turbine so that only operated at a maximum of 800 kilowatts rather than 900 kilowatts, you would see a lower capacity factor.
Right.
Because you would be seeing lower electricity out.
But if you had lower rec prices, lower O and M prices, then
Those, yeah.
That doesn't, that doesn't affect the capacity factor.
Yeah, we looked at those independently as well as the combined case, yes.
And the P90, you'd have a lower capacity factor because you'd have lower winds.
That's correct.
Okay, other questions for George? All right, George, thank you. John, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Now, David, are you here with us?
Tape change.
Tape change, all right, tape change as David walks to the mic.
I only have 10 percent more capacity on my iPad.
I've been very impressed, Patty. We've been moving through there.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just one more thing that I, I think we should offer to you.
You're not on tape yet, so why don't you wait a sec?
We're back.
We're back? Okay, sorry, John, go ahead.
Go ahead.
You're on.
Okay. Just one more thing that I would like to do is I think the Energy Study Committee would like to offer the Board of Selectmen the opportunity to sit down with us at any time and talk about the information that's in front of you. I don't think we could sit down with all of you at the same time because of open meeting laws, but maybe we could sit down with one or two of you at a time and address your questions so that we, you can get more complete answers.
Got you. Thank you very much. Now, I think most of us are aware that we have folks representing what they've called themselves common sense, but David Worth is also a professional in the field and represents himself as well and he has some points of interest for us. David?
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and John. Like you, I didn't know that I was going to end up knowing so much about a subject that seemed so relatively straightforward about two months ago. So there, in your packet is information that I provided actually a week ago to the Finance Committee when I spoke with them and I have taken and updated the little bit, six or seven slides to reflect some additional information that's come in in the past week and mostly about net metering and then, which I'll show you and talk to you about right now. I'm, I'm addressing you and, and this group really from, strictly from a private sector approach to how we would look and how I and, and as I'll tell you about some of the other people that I've talked with about this, how we approach these kinds of projects. And it, it, it has a level of rigor that I think is very important when you're making capital investments, particularly if they're being done because they are positioned as being either a cost reduction project or a basic investment. So we look at, and, and let me just say, people that have been involved in helping me put this together and talking with, there's a gentleman who lives out on the west end of the island, Bob Kiss. He works for JP Morgan. He's in their Clean Tech Investment Private Equity Group. Bob and I have collaborated on putting this stuff together. on putting this stuff together. Bob, in turn, has reached out to other investment professionals that he deals with, who do make these kinds of clean tech, renewable energy investments. And in fact, one of the people that was quite helpful in giving a real investment perspective is a company that's actually on the West Coast, but has just done a solar deal here in Massachusetts. So they did a, they came into a community, they did, it's a totally privately financed deal. So they have some experience also in Massachusetts. The other people that I reached out to was somebody that I know that works for General Electrics Energy Finance Group, and they're in the business, in addition to making turbines, they're in the business of financing these projects. And so I was there to get their view as to what it was that they looked at in projects when they went forward with them. And I provided them with the data, the pro forma that George and his team have put together, and the wind data. So, you know, we look, we come at this in a couple of different directions. So, I think there are three acceptance criteria that you need to, before you move forward. And the first is that you have a high degree of certainty about what your cash flows are. This is a 100% debt finance project. It's total recourse to the taxpayers. There's no recourse to bondholders. It's totally being financed by the taxpayers. In effect, the taxpayers have become equity investors in this project. So, when you have a project that's financed 100% by debt, it's very leveraged. Any bit of slip in the performance can have a big impact upon the financial outcome of the project. So you really want to understand what your cash flows are, which means you want to get a good handle on your revenues and a good handle on your costs as you go through and do your analysis. The second thing that I think is important is that you really need to verify four key financial drivers. The first is, do we have the right turbine? You know, is it a Class 1 or Category 1 turbine, or is it a 2? And I think that will make a fundamental difference in the economics of the project. It is right on the borderline of being, where it may perhaps be, should be, a Class 1 turbine. Dave Strong, who was referenced from SED, said at the Finance Committee meeting, that perhaps it ought to be a Class 1 turbine. It has got different economics, and they're not as favorable as a Class 2. The risk I see that you go forward with a Class 2 turbine is that you probably have, you potentially have higher O and M costs. You also may end up, you know, somebody mentioned about hurricanes, you know, there's some upper limits on the wind on some of the Class 2 turbines. The second thing you need to understand is energy production, and we'll talk a little bit about capacity factors. It is a very well-known, I'll call it a secret, within the wind business that these turbines and these projects underperform what their modeled results are. And it's alarming. It's very hard to get information about this, and I took it upon myself because I wasn't hearing information coming back from the consultant, so I have done some digging. It is contained in this, but we'll talk about it in a bit. The third area is energy costs. And as we all know, there's been a downward pressure on natural gas pricing, which is really the factor that is driving energy pricing, and we'll talk a little bit about that. And then operating costs. So, you've got to verify those four financial drivers to make sure that you've got your cash flows well planned out. And then, you've got to include all of the variables in your cash flow. I mean, if you leave things out, run your analysis, you're certainly not being intellectually honest, and you also may end up just coming with a, up with a bad decision. So, let's look at the revenue side. The first thing is, in projects like this, when they're done privately and they're financed, they're really done off the basis of having a contract for the revenue, and the energy production numbers are known and verified. So, we talk about performance-driven, we are talking about appropriate capacity factors and annual energy output from the system. This varies for a variety of reasons. I looked at a company on all of their public offering documents, First Wind, which is a large commercial wind developer. They use, every project that goes to ground, into the ground for investment, three years' worth of wind data. That is the floor of the information that they will use. The guys at General Electrics said they look up at up to 10 years' worth of wind data. There is that much variability. You can see a seven percentage point drop in energy output from just wind variation from one year to the next. So although Frank and those guys did a great job in terms of looking at the P-50s, the P-90s, the P-10s, the fact of the matter is that I think that the professionals will tell you there's not enough wind information to have the degree of confidence that's being, is being put forth. The other thing is, as I said, you can't contract for the output. This is net metering. And George and I have had a discussion, and raised the question of whether, since net metering is a political creature, is it going to be here over the life of the project? Certainly, there are people that feel that it will be around. There are examples, and most recently, there was a wind energy siting bill that came before the state legislature in 2010. It looked like a slam dunk. It didn't, it expired at the end of the session in 2010. In 2011, it never made it out of committee. It's dead. So, the political will can change pretty quickly here, and so, while it may not go away, it is certainly a risk that you need to think about. The price of energy, talked about the downward pressure from natural gas. The outlook is flat and declining in near term. Rather than taking a guess at what these numbers ought to be, you can find from, whoops, from January 2012, the U.S. Energy Information Agency, which is our nation's forecasting entity for the delivered cost of electricity, and they are projecting a 1.04% increase per year through 2035 in the delivered cost of energy, not just the commodity pricing, but the delivered cost of electricity. So, you know, it's a, this is a significant factor, because this really drives an awful lot of what the revenues on this project look like. As I said, there's no contract for the energy. So, one of the things that we, what I, we were, that Bob Kiss and I were trying to figure out is, so, you know, if these, we hear these projects are underrunning their performance, and we wanted to do two things. We wanted to first take a look at what Nantucket was projecting for capacity factors relative to other places where we could get wind information that was publicly available, and, you know, basically, we had some confidence that it was verifiable. So, we looked, and this is the capacity factor that Cape Wind is operating under, slightly higher wind regime, may or may not be explained by having different machines, but they are much taller structures, they have larger turbines, which generally means you have a much greater output and capacity factor calculation. These two projects are First Wind, again, a very large commercial wind company. I was able to find, after a fair amount of digging with the SEC, their entire initial public offering, where they talk about the performance of every single one of their wind farms. And this has been very helpful in terms of trying to figure out what we'll talk about down here, which is the actual performance versus what was targeted. So you can see, and here, the wind regimes are significantly greater than they are in Nantucket, where they're located in Hawaii. So let's talk a little bit about why, what's happening, and why do people, you know, why do we have these modeled numbers, and then why is performance falling short? So, this project, that's a First Wind project, Cahockton in New York, they have, and this data comes right out of their public offering documents, they have a projected output, a capacity factor of 27%. They're running 18%. These are professionals. Their business is to produce as much energy as they possibly can. Green Mountain Power, power company over in Vermont, has had some experience with wind over the years. This is illustrative, I think, because this has been running for 13 years. Their 13-year average capacity factor is 22.4. Their projected number, and this is all publicly available information, is 33%. The New York, in New York State, there was a look at 96, I believe, sites around the state where capacities factors were modeled, and then projects were evaluated, and as you can see, 36 was the modeled output capacity factor, and they're running at about 26% where they've built the projects. Newbury Port, and this was interesting to me, because I began to see, you know, first, we've got the professionals, the guys that really have to run these to make a lot of, generate a lot of revenue. With the Green Mountain Powers, you've got a company that's in the power generation business, but maybe not quite as aggressive as First Wind might be in terms of generating revenue. And then you go over to Newbury Port, and here's a project, it's a smaller machine, 600 or 660-kilowatt machine. They've got about a 35% capacity factor modeled, and they're running at about 18%. One of, so, you know, I came with two conclusions after looking at this information. The first is that actual performance, you know, is fitting in this cluster around 30%, 35% below target. And there are a whole variety of reasons. You know, you can't pareto out the reasons and figure out what the top five are, because they vary, but nevertheless, they do vary. Even the professionally managed guys struggle to make their modeled results. And what I found interesting about Newbury Port, and maybe this is analogous to Nantucket, maybe it isn't, and there are a lot of the Newbury Ports out there. These are sitting at universities and schools, and I called them, for lack of a better word, a turbine that's an ancillary activity to the main business of what they're doing. So they're not there to drive a lot of revenue. They're there to, for other reasons. And the net result is that you see this woefully underrun. And finally, I think, and this is just very recent information, I think it was from last Friday, there was a group of people that went out, and I know John went, and a few others, to Berkshire East, where there's a machine, a Power Wind 56, the machine that is in all of the models that have been done here for Matikit. They won't tell us what the numbers, their performance are. They did say, as it was reported to me, that they weren't going to be making money for six or seven years, that they were not producing what they thought that they were going to produce, and, but they are, they will not, they will not divulge what those numbers are.
David, that's the one owned by the ski resort?
Yes, it is, yep. And I think there's a bunch of stuff that's now up on the website from that visit. So, you know, I, coming back here now to the cost side, so we looked at the revenue side. Revenue side's very important, so what about the cost side? I think there's a capital cost risk still. We've talked a lot about that. I will point out in my analysis that if there's a 15% cost overrun, the annual benefit drops to $40,000 under the study committee's most favorable scenario. At least you think that that's, there's not some risk there. There's a huge foundation risk. It's being built at the landfill, and at Hull, they had a $2 million cost overrun when they built their turbine at the landfill, and they're still arguing about who is responsible for that cost overrun. So, cost overruns are, you know, this is not a slam dunk that we've got the capital costs nailed down. I believe that the operation and maintenance costs are too low, and that there's been no discussion about corrosion and what impact it's going to have. For those of you that have come onto the Cape recently, you've seen those turbines that are right across the bridge in Sagamore. We have a good view of what it caught, what amount of effort it takes to maintain turbines. There's a request for proposal out by the Air Force, and they include 150 pages of maintenance logs in one year, and those maintenance logs don't have just one item on them, there's a whole list of things. And the people that are maintaining those are living in a hotel. The folks from SED last week at the Finance Committee suggested that it was only going to be necessary to have somebody on the island visit once a month for the maintenance, and that they could handle all the rest of the maintenance remotely. If you have a problem and you need maintenance, and the machine goes down at 3 o'clock, and you need to send a tech, maybe they get here the next day. You're a one-off customer. You're not going to necessarily be high on people's list to provide service, and every day, every hour, every minute, that that machine isn't running, it's not generating revenue. So, I think this is very much an underestimated risk. The other risk that I think is very significant and needs to be discussed, and I think is significantly underestimated in the Capital Reserve, is if you have a problem with gearboxes. I think, and George, if I've got the number wrong, let me know, but I think it's 600,000 over 20 years is in the numbers. If you have to do a replacement on a gearbox, you're probably looking at $500,000. The information that's coming out on gearboxes and drivetrains now is that they're failing at about a five-year interval. Now, maybe yours doesn't fail, but I suspect that you are under-reserved in the event that you have one failure. You're going to lose revenue, and this will be something that you would have to go back probably to the taxpayers to make up. Very expensive, and, you know, you've got things like cranes that you've got to get over and all of that. Parts availability, sounds pretty innocuous. Of course, the parts will be available. Well, the Falmouth Experience, actually, you can call over there, it's pretty illustrative. They were waiting for a $10,000 part for months. The machine wasn't operating. If you buy a turbine and parts are coming now from all over the world, are you going to be able to get it here? Is it going to come in a month? Is it going to come in a week? All the time that you perhaps are not operating. Haven't seen any information on property or casualty insurance costs. There's liability costs, estimated about $9,000. Are you going to fold this into the town's property and casualty policy? The numbers that we've gotten from people that are in this business run about $40,000 to $45,000 for property and casualty. And then, finally, the dismantling costs, I see nowhere in the cash flows. Maybe they've been discussed. I do not believe that the Capital Reserve will be anywhere near adequate to take this thing down at the end of the process. So, Patty, you wanted some numbers, so here are my, here's my analysis. And what I tried to do was first start with just the performance at various capacity factors, and I adjusted the Energy Study Committee's number down to 41%, which reflects the effect of the net metering cap. And so, and then I looked at Cape Wind, which is a reasonably benchmark, and then if you figure that, you know, people are underperforming in the 30% range, some of these numbers in here begin to make a lot more sense. So, paybacks, paybacks are going to extend as capacity factors go out. Internal rate of return, which we, George didn't talk about, but is an absolute figure of merit on the investment side. Under the most optimistic scenario, it's about 11.4%, as capacity factors drop, the internal rate of return drops, as does the net present value. I put a market rate calculation for net present value, you can see the backup in the document, versus the Energy Study Committee. Energy Study Committee used 4.25%. That's not a market rate. 4.25% is basically the default rate of the town. I mean, it doesn't reflect any risk whatsoever. Market rate numbers are 12% to 15% for NPV calculations. In all of my analysis, I did use 12%, but the professional investment class will, are looking at a much higher net present value calculation. This other item, DSCR, which is the debt service coverage ratio, so this is how much revenue you have to pay to cover your debt service payments. So if you only have a 1.0, that means you're just generating enough to make your debt payment. Anything above 1, you're starting to make, you know, obviously generate more. If it drops below 1, you don't have enough money to make your, to cover your debt payments. And then the annual benefit is information that is an average across the 20 years, somewhat misleading, because in some of these cases, it's higher in the beginning years and then goes negative in the out years. So that's just the performance at various capacity factors using a So that's just the performance at various capacity factors using a 3 percent commodity price increase and a 3 percent delivered price increase, so the, this is the original information that was provided by the consultants. So then, I went and looked at the 1 percent per year electricity cost increase, delivered cost increase, because this is a pretty big, I mean, first of all, if we could all get this right, we'd probably not be here, but, and we'd be elsewhere because we were, had done such a great job of projecting this and taking advantage of it. This is using the Energy Information Agency's number, which I think is a, from my perspective, certainly verifiable, incredible number. So when you do that, you begin to see, paybacks don't change all that much, but these other figures of merit begin to drop. And what's really most critical is that if you drop your capacity factor, so if this is where you end up performing, you know, you're barely covering, just with your energy cost at 1 percent, you're barely covering your debt service and your annual benefits. I mean, even under the 36 percent, you're at about $44,000, which is a pretty, pretty much a razor, razor's edge. And in the third analysis, if you take the 1 percent per year cost increase, you make an upward adjustment of O&amp;M in Capital Reserves from what's in there now, which is a .01 per kilowatt hour to .014. I chose that because SED uses this number for the identical turbine over in the proforma they did in Duxbury, same turbine within the past year. So they were actually, had programmed a slightly higher O&amp;M number, so I added that into, into that. And as you can, as you can see, you know, the annual benefit, even under the most optimistic projection, goes to about 78,000. And, but what's more important is that once you start to drop down, you're, you're not even covering your debt service at that point, and you have no annual benefit, and very quickly, you can slip into a negative, negative position. So, my conclusion is that, you know, of the acceptance criteria that we would look at in industry, that there's really a failure to meet them. If this project were under consideration by private industry as a cost reduction project, it would have to meet between a one and a three-year payback. This project doesn't even come close to being paid back in one to three years. If it were a market-based investment, it just wouldn't be made. It, it just doesn't meet the professional investment criteria for a project that people, professional investors are going to, going to invest in. We talked a little bit about the turbine class and whether it would stand up to the wind conditions and what kind of risk is associated with that. Energy production estimates, which is the capacity factor, you can see these. I think one of the most important, my most important takeaway, is that the professionals in the business struggle to meet their numbers. We're not professionals. And in point of fact, we don't even have anybody within the town who's, who owns this project or who is going to own it. When that point is brought up, I, you know, and I think it's still on the, on the website, is it operates itself. Well, anybody that's operated a big piece of equipment or been in an industrial environment knows that equipment doesn't operate itself. You need somebody who's going to be responsible for driving revenue out of this thing on a daily basis. I think there's some project accounting costs that are still, still out there. You've got to thread the needle every year for 20 years on this project to have a financial benefit. You just don't have that much room for something to, something to go wrong. I want to finish by just a little, a little story that I find quite sobering. In 2006, the town of Princeton, New Jer, Princeton, Massachusetts, had a feasibility study done about developing some wind turbines. And they went to the town, and a couple of the things that, and this will sound very familiar, a couple of the benefits that they spoke about was that it was going to reduce the town's energy costs. At the time, they said by about $200,000. And they were going to, and it would be a source of energy for them over the next 20 years. So the project advanced in 2009, the turbines were built, and then 21 days ago, February 1st, 2012, the general manager from the municipal utility that runs them in Princeton sent this letter. And I ask, is this the letter somebody wants to write to the taxpayers of Nantucket? "Delivery issues, commissioning problems, and breakdowns have plagued this endeavor. Presently, we are dealing with a failure in a gearbox. The cost of this repair is approximately $600,000. Under present declining energy market conditions, higher than anticipated operating costs, we have found ourselves looking at a loss of at least $631,000 in 2010 and $628,000 in 2011. Factor in the declining energy price and we will continue to lose money." And I thought what was most poignant was, I'm certain this was not the original thought process for this project. So, thank you.
Thanks, David. Comments or questions? Whitey, do you have something?
Yeah. David?
Yes, sir.
When you say that it's a 30 percent capacity factor, what wind velocity is that?
I don't know that I said it was 30 percent.
Well, it's a 30 percent, in your...
I said... Are you, are we talking, are we talking here or are we talking back on this analysis?
No, 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 no. Go back to where you were. You're basing your analysis, and you've got a 30 percent capacity factor.
Right.
What's the wind velocity?
The wind velocity at Matikit. Capacity, the capacity factor here doesn't, when you're looking at this, capacity factor is just, is the annual, is the shorthand for the annual energy output that's coming from the machine.
Yeah.
And what impacts the annual energy output, as I just went through, is things like operation and maintenance, things like having gearbox failures. If the machine doesn't run, it doesn't generate energy. So, if it doesn't generate energy, your annual energy production goes down, and it's reflected in the capacity factors that are cheap. That's the whole point of this target here. That's their target...
Can I just stay with the one up here?
Yep.
Just a second. The one we're talking about.
Yep.
I want to know what your wind velocity, because your wind velocity...
8.47 meters per second.
But that isn't the capacity factor.
That's what it yields off of the information that you guys have put together.
No. It's wrong.
What's wrong?
You cannot...
41 percent, top line. That's what you're saying.
That's what you're saying.
No, I'm saying 30 percent. What's the wind velocity?
He's saying, if it runs at 36 percent, that's what it's going to make.
Yeah, he didn't say it would.
Starting at 41, which is what we're predicting, which is the top line. See it up there, Whitey, where it circles this 41 percent?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, he's saying, if it runs at 36 percent, it's going to make this. If it runs at 35, it's going to make X. If it runs at 33, it'll make that. If it runs at 30, it'll make that. That's what he's saying.
Well, I understand that, but what conditions does, in other words, what's the wind velocity when you go to 30 percent? How about, it just doesn't perform like it's supposed to, like I've been saying from day one, that I don't believe that these things are going to perform, and everyone on the committee agrees that we won't know the actual capacity number, I haven't heard anyone disagree with me, until it's put up and it runs for a while. Am I correct? I mean, that's what Peter said at the FinCom meeting last week.
Let me, let me see if I can eliminate the dimensions of the question here. I think, there are two ways of looking at that 30 percent number. One is that the turbine simply doesn't run for some reason, which I, is that, is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, you know, the availability is for what, you know, 70 percent or 75 percent or some number in that range, which, as Bobby suggests, is not something what can rule out of the realm of possibility. We do have experience with other turbines that, you know, the one at the high school's been running at 99 percent. Hull has seen numbers in the 98, 99 range. Jiminy Peak has been in the 98, 99 range. But is it theoretically impossible that a turbine might run at 75 percent? It's not theoretically impossible.
No, but, you know, we're seeing data, you know, from Green Mountain Power, they're underrunning about 33 percent over what their, what their projected numbers were. So, I mean, we don't need to duel about this.
David, I got you. Before we go back and forth, I think the idea was to give us an opportunity to ask questions.
Yep.
And I think Whitey's question was about the 30 percent, and so we have a sense for, that's sort of a what-if, Whitey, the way I look at it.
Yeah, but it's, it's a highly improbable, improbable what-if.
I don't think anybody said, you know, what the probabilities are. George gave us some what-ifs as well, for a different set of probabilities, and I don't think we have his probabilities either.
I don't think you're going to find anyone that's going to guarantee it's going to run at 41 percent. I'd love to see someone say that. And you won't, because he can't. We don't know. Right? We assume, based on the wind velocities that we have in the machine, that it will run at 41 percent. At 40, 45 percent, but... No, it's dropped down, Whitey.
Yeah, it's down to 41.
It's down to 41. But even so, we, we can't guarantee that, right, George?
Well, you certainly can't guarantee the wind. What you typically do is put into your request for proposal as an acceptance test, so that when the wind turbine is started up, you verify its performance against a, against a curve and hold the manufacturer to that test. Now, I'm not personally familiar as to whether that has been a practice in the industry or whether it was 10 years ago. Certainly, practices have changed over the last 10 years in terms of buying turbines as we've learned more about some of the pitfalls in the past and try to avoid those when we go forward. I think, but I do want to make a distinction, because if the 30 percent capacity factor is solely due to low wind, that would not be a credible...
And that's not...
That's not what you're saying. I just wanted to make sure I understood your point, so let's take that off the table. So it's not the lack of wind that you're questioning, you're questioning the scenario in which the turbine runs at, you know, 70 percent availability as opposed to the 90s that have been experienced at the high school or elsewhere.
And it's not the lack of wind in these other examples either. It's, this is an operating issue.
I think he's just trying to point out that some folks haven't performed up to par, and as our consultant said, he wouldn't tell us, give us specific examples that he's worked with to give us those comparisons. So, that's where we are.
Yeah, but it's not reasonable. That's the problem.
Well, nobody said, you know, I think one of our dilemmas, and that's maybe we've got to sit back a little bit as a board. My sense, Whitey, is part of our job here is to think about whether or not we, in the end, want to make a recommendation on the article. Let's, let's just go a step back. There's an article on town meeting floor, the town meeting is going to vote. If they vote yes, then it's going to go to a ballot vote. The Finance Committee's going to make a recommendation whether they support that article or not. Our board has an opportunity to make a recommendation or not. And we're trying to gather enough information. And obviously, there are different points of view, Whitey. And it seems to me, in the end, we're going to be asked as individuals to make judgments on our sense of the probabilities of likely outcomes and what risk profile we want to incur. George has a perspective on that, David has a slightly different perspective. You know, if you go to the town of Lenox, folks, I just shared with you, they're going through exactly the same process. They have three, they have a big committee, they have subcommittees. Those committees were charged with six guys from opponents, six guys for four. They have to get together and make their own decision. In effect, we're putting ourselves in that position right here. So we can continue on and go as long as we want to, but I think that's the judgment we're going to have to make in the end. Patty? And I'll come back to you, Whitey.
Just quickly, I mean, we're going to, we can go back and forth and back and forth on the risk assessment, as you said, Rick, but I think the most important thing to me that's been said is, is by David, which is that the tax base is the only one assuming the risk here. So 100 percent of the risk sits on the tax base, and I, and I don't think, for me, that's a problem. I mean, I don't think that's a good thing. For me, it's a problem, is the way I should phrase it, so...
More questions, Whitey?
You've got some hands.
Quick question of Rick.
Yes, sir.
Bert, Huber, Rick, in Lenox, were the proponents and the opponents, were those all town committees? Or was that a town committee?
I just, I just found it interesting to go on the website.
Well, I find it interesting as well, but were they all town committees? Or were they, was it a group of private citizens?
You know, I, I don't know how organized the opponents were in that case.
Well, I think that's, I think that's important.
Rick, I... I think that's fine. But the point to me, and I'm just reading the website, Bert, is they say they had people who were clearly in favor and people who were clearly not in favor. So whether they're a town committee or whether they're a group of private individuals, I think they're citizens too, incidentally, just as you are. And I think it's appropriate to find some people who are willing to sort of challenge the numbers, because my sense, quite frankly, the town has hired consultants, and their charge is to help get this project through. I mean, you know, let's be clear about that.
So I, I would agree that they're, that they're citizens as well.
Yeah.
My concern would be the bias.
I, I think that's a good concern.
And that's if we're looking at things, if we're looking at things in an unbiased way, and it's just, I have, I would like to look at the, I would look at the underperformance and the overperformance, I think that that's responsible.
I, I have no problem.
I'm not so sure that...
Our, our job is to make a judgment, just as yours is, as a citizen, and there are people who review all this data, and some people have clearly come to the decision, it's an acceptable risk, it's something they want to do for other reasons as well, and other citizens have come to somewhat different conclusions. I think they're both valid.
My comment is, my comment is, my comment solely came out of the Lenox, the Lenox experience that you just brought up.
I just encourage you all to go to that side. It's just another one to look at.
I think it's important here, too, that, you know, I'm sorry, Patty.
No, I just put my hand up.
I think it's important that everyone realizes that, you know, we're, we're probably going to make a recommendation on this one way or another, but we're not the ones that are deciding this anymore. We decided to put it on the town meeting floor, it's on the town meeting floor, the voters will have the ultimate decision. We're, our job is to make sure everyone gets the information, and that's really what this is about. Yeah, but you, everybody's got to get the correct information. This is not correct information here. I beg to differ with you. Those numbers just give you figures as to if, what the capacity factor would be if it ran. And that, we're, the Energy Committee is giving one perspective only, and that's 41 percent at 3 percent increase across the board. There's no, they didn't put out multiple scenarios of saying, well, if the machine doesn't run at 41 percent, and it runs at 35, this is what the income will be. That's what that does. It doesn't say it's going to do it, it just gives you options. What is, what's the probability that it ever would be 30 percent?
I will guarantee you that no, there are different opinions on the probability, but, so let's, let's just do a couple of things here. Before we, I'll come out to you in a minute, but right now, the board has the opportunity to ask questions. And so, let's continue in that mode, and then I'll be happy to turn to those who are here. So Patty?
No, I was just going to make a follow-up on my comment earlier, which is that, you know, ultimately, the questions on the technology and the various, you know, the various capacities and the various wind mills, and what we've asked for as far as energy is concerned is a decision that, is a decision that's entirely separate than the one that actually faces us. The one that faces us is whether or not we put the municipality in a position of assuming the risk. And we're, we're listening to what might work or might not work with respect to, you know, the different venues, the different heights, the different, you know, capacities. But ultimately, it comes down to a broader question for us as policymakers, which is whether or not we're willing to take and make this a municipal priority when there are other priorities on our table. So, again, I just want everyone to keep that in mind as we go forward. It may be that we're splitting hairs slightly on the capacity issues, it may be that, you know, one will, you know, one structure is better than the other, technology improves, who knows? But from my seat, I'm making a decision, at least on the recommendation, as to whether or not this is good for the town. Part of the reason why I supported going to town meeting, because I felt the town, after the investment, by the way, that the Board of Selectmen has agreed to put into this analysis, after that energy has been spent and time has been spent, that I thought the town deserved the right to take a look at this themselves. So, again, I just want everyone to keep that in mind. I mean, I, I could sit here all night and listen to the various hair splits on the, you know, 41 to 30 percent or whatever it might mean, but, and I'm, and, you know, granted, I'm learning an awful lot, but I do think that, at the end of the day, it comes down to a lot of other issues.
I agree. So, Whitey?
Well, we're here tonight to discuss the economic risk, and I don't think it's appropriate to have the risk put in that is highly improbable. And, and I think that that's where we're making an error.
Good. So that, I understand that point of view. Bobby, are you all set?
I'm done.
Patty?
I'm good.
Good. Now, anybody out here will take some comments and then we'll move along, because, no ma'am, the gentleman in the front had his hands up first, so he, Jason? And let, we'll, you know, look, it's quarter of nine, we've got some other items on the agenda, so, you know, we're happy to take questions and comments, but I think we're going to have to be realistic and limit them to, you know, a minute apiece. We've got, we're happy to take them, but we do have some timeframes. we're happy to take them, but we do have some timeframes here. Jason?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the record, Jason Flanagan. I just have three quick comments to make. First, regarding your statement, Mr. DeCosta, that the job of the consultant was to push this project through. It's not. It's their job to get the facts.
I think I probably said that.
Either way, whoever, their job is to get the facts and present them objectively. That's what we pay them for. Secondly, I'm a little shocked that this is being accepted as a valid study. They're using data from Cape Wind and several other projects in determining the outcome for a project at Landville. They're cherry picking the numbers and randomly and arbitrarily assigning percentage reductions in outcomes. That would be laughed out of any scientific community. And lastly, I really wish that you would defend your committees as hard as you do the opponents for this project. These people volunteer their time. They have been insulted. They have been threatened. And people have been outrightly hostile to them. And I think it reflects poorly on you, that you don't stick up for them the way that you do the opposition. Thank you.
Next comment? Ann, one minute, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ann Caspa, I'm the chairman of the Energy Study Committee. First, I would like to actually bring up a point here. Mr. Atherton, I do not think that it's fair that you allowed the opposition to speak for over twenty minutes, solid, and you're trying to move us along. I really don't appreciate that one bit. And, you know, it's, it really isn't our fault. It isn't my fault that we're at this point in the meeting. And I do think that I'm entitled to speak my, my say. As a private citizen, I'd like to say that the possibility for Nantucket generating its own electric power is very exciting to me. And this is a baby step that will bring us closer to that goal. And I think it's really great. People will bring up, we heard last week, a presentation about gasification, which I thought was very compelling. We also have pursued, as the Energy Committee, we have pursued solar at the dump. And I also think that is very compelling. My opinion, bring it all. Let's do it. Come on. The, the downside, of course, is the net metering limitations that we have right now. However, I believe that if we work the right political angles, those obstacles may be overcome. If on March 31st, voters decide that the risks of Article 13 outweigh the rewards, that's their choice. That's what we did. And I applaud the Board of Selectmen for bringing that to town meeting floor. I can assure you that the option of private ownership of this turbine will be pursued to remove the financial risk to the town. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now, there were more hands? They've gone away. Okay. Yes, sir.
Oh, just a quick question. Mark Palmer in Matticat, been there eighteen years. I guess I, I followed the thought process in this, the second analysis. And I think it's sort of put forth in, in good faith. And it considers a lot of things that I haven't seen brought up in, in the pro formas and so on that we've seen yet. But I do agree with this, or have the same question about where did the numbers come from? They seem to be cherry picked, you know. Why isn't the data, for example, the technical data from the high school included? I mean, this is our big example. We have the data. I understand that the financials aren't as much of a concern with the high school project because it was just paid for. But as far as the availability numbers, I mean, what are the availability statistics globally and for projects of this type? So I'd like to see more, more of that kind of information, that kind of data.
Good comment. Yes, sir, over here. Ken?
Hi, I'm Ken Blackshaw. I'm on the Energy Study Committee. I'm also a citizen of Nantucket. I've been on the Energy Study Committee for some months now. And I'm very impressed with the people that are on the committee and the amount of work that they've done on the committee. And I believe they, they feel that they are acting based on a mandate that the Board of Selectmen and the town of Nantucket asked them to provide, study of our energy situation and recommendations thereto. I, I'm very impressed with, with David, David Worth's comments there. It looks like you've put a lot of effort into this too. It's a, it's a shame that you weren't on our committee. You could have provided us some input, you know, for maybe months or years that might have changed the direction that we ended up in now. But it's nice to hear from you at this point. You're, you're very helpful in providing things that, you know, the Board of Selectmen needs to be thinking about. And, you know, obviously, we're not, we haven't bought ourselves a wind turbine. We're looking at potential wind turbines. And the one we actually might buy would, might be a different one because we're going to have to put out a request for proposal. And all the elements that you've been mentioning here certainly should be part of a request for proposal. I think that's the most intelligent thing that the Board of Selectmen can do. It'd be to formulate a real, realistic request for proposal so that bids come in and then we actually have some concrete decisions to make. And we can evaluate these factors that you're, that you're asking us to evaluate. But until we have that request for proposal and actual bids, we're really not talking about anything tangible here, are we? So the, I think it would be very nice if we could get to the point where we could actually issue an RFP. If we issue an RFP, it doesn't mean we're actually going to do anything. We're going to get bids. Maybe we'll reject them all because of reasons, you know, like you're mentioning. And the other thing to think about, and I know you guys think about it all the time, so I'll just say it again for fun. But, I mean, there's two reasons that we look at. We're looking mainly at a financial case here. That's one thing, a financial case, would it be a good idea to have a wind turbine, a wind turbine? And will it save us money? And, you know, will it be a good investment? Will it pay for itself? The other thing is, though, do we want to make a statement about renewable energy? You know, people drive Priuses. And most people that drive them lie about the mileage they get. But, you know, they, but they feel good about driving the Prius. So I don't mean to downgrade any other automobile choices here. But, so.
Maybe it's a good thing I don't have a Prius.
Yeah, I don't have one. I wish, I wish I could afford one. But anyway, that's kind of the point I'm making. I mean, there's a lot of good discussion here. But I think the key is that you have to develop an RFP. And until you develop the RFP and get some bids and then evaluate them, this is all interesting discussion, but it doesn't really do anything. Thank you.
Okay. Ken, thank you. John Stover?
Very quickly, I think Jason made a comment about, somebody's comment at the Board of Selectmen's level about our purpose and kind of characterizing it as being more of a proponent than what we, I think we are. I don't think there's anybody who's heard me in these discussions would say that I'm not objective. I'm not trying to be totally objective. And I think everybody on this Energy Committee may have their positions. But we are trying to bring the information to you. That is our charge. Bring the information to you as best we can. And we try to bring both sides of the story. We took a trip out to Berkshire East. And that trip was made completely open and available to anybody who wanted to come, including the opposing views. And I'm not saying that I have a view one way or the other. Frankly, I have a, I don't really have a horse in this race except to try and take a step in the right direction in terms of getting off of fossil fuels and getting away from them. I do have a question that I would like to ask Mr. Aronson to help me with. Is that okay? George, would you give me a hand, please? You've got a couple of issues. And if you'd be kind enough to just express those, thanks.
Yeah, I think I took notes during Mr. Worth's presentation. I'll try to keep my responses. I'm not going to respond point, point, point. That would take too long. Just a couple of comments. I guess the first is, if you look at this from a private investment view, you're looking in a very different way. I don't know that any municipal project is evaluated at a discount rate of twelve to fifteen percent. I mean, the highest I've seen is typically a bond rate such as the four and a quarter. And often they're evaluated at the inflation rate. Similarly, these types of projects in the investment community, whereas the GE Capitals of the world may not be interested, and I don't doubt that, there are plenty of private investors that are, such as Palmer Capital, that is doing similar projects in Fairhaven and Situate. There's a similar project in Kingston, et cetera. So that there are private investors that do invest their own money in these types of projects. Some of them I actually spoke with about the project at last Thursday's NICA conference in Boston. And in fact, based, based on some performing, information, there is some interest should a private investor be interested. So I don't want the, the comments about lack of interest at a certain level among certain private investors to dispel the idea that in fact, a private investor might not be interested because clearly some are. I just wanted to correct something that David put out. He mentioned a gearbox cost. He was referring to gearbox costs of one and a half megawatt turbines, which are in fact significantly larger than the nine hundred kilowatts that's been the basis to this date. When you go from nine hundred kilowatts to one point five megawatts, a lot of things change. Size, the ability to get the blades off a boat to the site, which is why we, one of the reasons we went down. And also the type of crane you need. Your gearbox replacement costs shrink substantially. The pro forma number was actually based on three hundred fifty thousand dollars escalating, not six hundred thousand. And we believe that's a closer number to what the real number would be for the smaller turbine. And that's significantly lower. And we believe the reserves in the pro forma are adequate to meet that requirement. The AIA data on energy is always interesting. Typically, it's national in scope. It's lagged two to three years behind recent data because that's how long it takes to get a number out of the Energy Department. It's interesting when you look at New England, it's not only natural gas. You also see that the coal plants such as Salem, Brayton Point are under tremendous, tremendous pressure to close. Some of the nuclear power plants, including Pilgrim, are looking at a license extensions. In over twenty years, they may go away. You're looking with these retirements at new facilities to replace them that will shoot costs back up. So it's not only downward pressure, there's also upward pressure on costs in New England. And in fact, anybody who wants to read the Cape Wind decision, they do an extensive analysis of that. They justified eighteen point seven cents per kilowatt hour, which many in this room would quibble with as to the cost of a wind turbine. We're looking at about ten cents a kilowatt hour for the town's cost for the Matticat turbine, which is a little bit more than half of what the DPU justified in a nearly year-long proceeding using many, many economic forecasters and a lot of money to go through that process. So just to put some perspective on it for whatever, you will use that particular information. And I think I'll hold it to that. And anyone who wants to ask me questions later can do so.
Yeah, I think we should emphasize that you've got, I think we said this last week or the week before, George, lots of detailed papers which go through all of your assumptions very nicely. So it's all right there.
For whoever to vote whichever way.
Yes, sir. Carl?
Carl Borchert, former member of the Energy Study Committee. I'm speaking as a private citizen. Mr. Worth, with all respect, I know you put a lot of work into this. And I really respect you getting up here and giving this presentation. I would love to see you do a a cost analysis of the effects of global warming and climate change on this island, such as rising sea levels, more powerful storms and coastal flooding. Also, number two, if wind power is alarmingly underperforming, why is it the number one source of, why is it the fastest growing source of energy worldwide right now? And number three, of course, I forgot what number three was because it's been a long night. But, yes, the part in Falmouth that was waited for, for ten thousand dollars was not for the turbines. It was for NSTAR's grid in that area in order for Wind Two to be shut down if it was overloading the grid. It was not, had anything to do with the turbines. Vestas is replacing a generator and Wind One right now under warranty. And in Princeton, looks like they blew it because they should have got a five-year warranty from two thousand and nine to two thousand and fourteen on the gearbox. They may have made a mistake. You can get a five-year warranty pretty much standard. Thank you.
Carl, thank you. We know you've put a lot of time in and have good, good grasp of the facts. We appreciate it. Bobby?
Carl, just reminding you one thing I wanted to ask the Energy Committee while they're here. Did we ever get a, a figure from national grid as to what it would cost to hook to do the net metering back in? We haven't got that yet.
Still waiting.
Still waiting.
Anybody else? All right, thank you. Why don't we then move on our agenda and carry on? So thanks for all of your time and attention. Next item is the open meeting law, going from a heady, difficult subject to something a little more mundane, Libby. And since it's nine o'clock, we might.
I have a suggestion.
Agree to postpone this one?
Yes. And in the meantime, we send it around to some of the other boards, committees and commissions to see, get their input.
Right. We've got a draft of some proposed ways to deal with this from a policy point of view. So I think we'll share that with our other committees, get some more input and bring it back to the board when we're ready. And the next item is a review of the warrant. Again, just to remind us, the board has usually commented, not necessarily on all articles, but on articles that felt important to comment on. And, you know, we can go through it with Libby one at a time, or we can pick out articles we think we want to deal with or have special questions about. Any pleasure of the board?
I've got us ready to go.
You want to go through, Libby, you want to just move us to the ones, but not all of them? I mean, I think you can go through quickly enough.
Yeah, I don't think we need to go through every single one.
You know, you could almost jump ahead to the capital articles right away, the freestanding capital articles.
And, you know, we have opportunity to go to FinCom if we're interested in what the hearings are.
So I, but I, I just made a couple of notes. You want to go to some specific ones? Patty, you have a?
No, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm fine at this point.
Yeah. Well, I just, a couple of notes then to make us aware. One of the issues in, in, I'm jumping way ahead, Article ninety-five, this is an issue that's come up. This is the one that talks about leasing the industrial land. And one of the, it, it took five acres, if I have this right, Andrew. And it said that, it asked the town meeting to allow the board sort of an open-ended, beyond the normal restrictions on lease terms. And there's a recommended.
Thirty years.
Thirty years. Recommended to take that open-ended and bring the lease term back to thirty years. Another approach says live with the restriction in the, of the, I think it's ten years. And when a deal comes in that goes over ten years, deal with it at that time. Is it five? Thank you. So there's, there's a question on that, whether we want to really ask for something that open-ended or whether we're better off to keep it reasonably tight and so that the town meeting has a chance to see the terms we're dealing with anyway. So that's, that's a question if you want to deal with that or not. My own sense is not, is to just go back to where we are. So that's just one person.
My only question with that is what happens if, about a tank farm?
I think, well, then I think the tank farm, we have to figure out the terms and say, here are the terms we think are best and go back to town meeting.
So we'd have to bring an article to town meeting?
No. I mean, I know that's an issue. And that's a primary driver for trying to get this passed before we know what the terms are. But the question might be whether it puts us in a position where we're not as, I don't know, hard and analytical about the terms since we have them pre-approved. But, Andrew, you know, I know you're interested in this, so please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I am interested in this. And I, I think that in the type of, you know, you've made a policy not to sell any more fee interests, that it would be leases.
Right.
Okay. And I think any of the types of uses we're talking about are entities that are going to be required to make major capital improvements. And I think that five years, you know, in, in another article, which I don't know if it's on your list or not, you know, you offer up to a fifty-year lease for an affordable housing project. So I, I think there should be some consistency here. I think the thirty years or twenty years or something is more reasonable than the five. And I think, you know, we, we go from town meeting schedule to, to schedule. This article was brought up last year and the board decided not to pursue it. It was brought back this year so we could maybe make some progress on negotiation. And I think that, you know, I think you should seriously consider something longer than five years.
I understand. That, that's a point of view. I just want to make sure the board's aware that's an issue. And it's pre approving the term, only the term. It doesn't approve the financial characteristics of the lease. So, anyway, the recommendation in the current draft motion is for thirty years, right?
Yeah.
Another one we wanted to bring to the board's attention, ninety-two, is that the draft recommendation, this is about. this is about the Warren's Landing property, and it's an article which is intending to authorize it to be transferred from the town to the land bank. And Andrew, I understand there have been some discussions that may want to put some restrictions on that. They're acceptable to both sides. Help us, just so the board's alert to what's happening here.
Just, sorry.
Okay, we're back.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, during our discussions with the Finance Committee in this, there were issue, various issues were brought up, and that's sort of the source of where these potential, you know, amendments came up in the actual motion. So in this one, in the Warren's Landing Road, the property is now under the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission. And the proposal would be to move it to the land bank, but add certain conditions. That number one, guarantee the right of the public to access the property, that continue the maritime use, the boat, the boating use on the property, and basically to have some sort of a reverter clause if those objectives aren't met. And also one big beach easement, so which should go with really any town property. The long-term goal should be get, to be, get a one big beach easement on all the coastal land. So those are out there for discussion, and the board might have other things, you know, that might want to work their way into the motion.
We have no restrictions on that land now, do we? Is there, is it a conservation restriction on it?
The restriction on it now is that the Conservation Commission is the guardian of that property. So anything that happens on it has to be approved by them. So it's not, it's not a property that's under the general sort of management of the town.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure the board was aware of the restrictions in the motion. They sure make sense to me, and especially if they're acceptable to the land bank as the receiving agency. Then it's a win-win, I hope. Is that sort of where we are?
That's what we're trying to get to is, and that the land bank had no objection to those amendments because they felt their management of the property is consistent with other, you know, waterfront properties where there is boating activity. I mean, they really expressed no interest in changing that. Of course, the composition of that board might change, so this regulation would protect it into the future.
Would it keep the two roads that are there now open in perpetuity? And the ability to drive a trailer down there even though there's not a ramp there and launch a boat like you can do now, things of that nature?
That would be, the Board of Selectmen would have to, you know, develop these restrictions in advance, and that's what the motion says. That those restrictions would have to be placed on the property prior to it going away.
Whitey?
Yes, what is the Conservation Commission's feeling on this? I know in the past they resisted this change. What, how is it now?
They have not, to my knowledge, they have not had a formal vote on this yet. I have discussed it only at a staff level with their administrator. And we had a discussion about pretty much lack of resources to take care of a lot of these properties. There's a handful of properties that remain in their jurisdiction, so.
Whitey, that's a good question. If they have to, do they have to formally act? Do we know?
They do, so, and again, this becomes a permissive article. In the event that they don't act, you won't be able to transfer.
So we might have a little outreach and check with the commissioners and see where we can go. It sounds like it makes good sense, is my reaction. Okay. Other articles people want to bring up, or do you want to, because we're not going to meet till the 7th. That's our next meeting. So those three capital articles, if we want to make a recommendation, we need to be prepared and have thought them through. And other articles, Libby, help us now, that you think we ought to act on and be prepared to discuss, or?
Do you want to talk about 60?
60, I do. It's on my list as well. 60 and also the other one on the CPC, 67.
Yeah, I think those are the major ones.
60 is the article which brings the water company and the airport non-union employees within the town administrative procedures for personnel matters. And just to be frank, there's been a little bit of concern by the water company and the airport that that may be a little overreaching. So we, Libby and I have had some discussions with the head of both of those, with Dan Drake and with Alan Reinhardt, and Libby also with Bob Gardner, as to whether there's an alternative possibility or whether we want to proceed with the article as written. So I'm not sure we have a firm conclusion yet, Libby, on that one.
No, no.
But just to alert the board that that's a matter of some.
Are you going to be briefing us on just what those conversations are about at some point before we make?
Yeah, I think they're, it's, you know, I, whether they want to come and discuss them, Patty, I think there's a little bit of jurisdictional issue here. And I don't think our intent is to interfere with their hiring process, but to assure that we have, let's say, equal job grades along amongst the various town entities, that kind of thing.
We probably need more information if we're going to make a recommendation. There's been conversations we're just not aware of. Maybe we could share.
Happy to do that with you. So we'll come back to let you know. Whitey?
Yeah, what happens when somebody might want to move from the airport and take a job with the town? Do they have bumping privileges? Should they?
No, and we're only talking about non-union employees. They're not subject to anything like that.
Employees are subject to collective bargaining agreements, remain subject to those, and those prescribe most of the personnel types of issues we're talking about here. I think we're, you know, in my mind, it's trying to make sure, let's say, a financial person doing a similar job has a similar grade scale across those entities, so they don't get out of line, which is a possibility.
This is non-union?
Non-union, yep. So in some ways, there aren't all that many people involved either way.
Yeah.
But it also came about, I think we all know, that we felt some of the personnel practices in those, primarily in the airport, were probably not equitable across all employees. And we're trying to develop a method to deal with that, so.
Will we be seeing the FinCom comments too?
They're supposed to decide the day before, finally, we act on the 7th. But they have been passing some, making some motions as they go.
Yep, that's what I thought.
Is the bulk of that meeting just to go over the warrant? We going to go through the articles one by one, or are we just going to do it on our own?
However you guys want to do it, but you're going to have to, I think, spend some time on the 7th to determine which articles you want to comment on.
Right.
And what you want your comment to say.
Well, that's why we're trying to get at it tonight, to get teed up so as we get your thoughts.
Some of it might depend on the FinCom comment because obviously
That's right.
Yep.
You know, the one thing I, personally, when we go through and say, you know, we agree with them, I think that's not necessarily useful, so, you know what I mean?
Patty agreed. I think we may want to change our approach a little bit.
Right.
And not just be so automatic, and when we comment, we really want to comment.
Right. That would be what I recommend.
I can pass on to you guys as we go to what FinCom has acted on so far. I think I gave you my little chart here, which I'm updating. It doesn't have the actual motion, so I can send you the warrant as it goes. It's just, it's draft, it changes all the time.
I love that.
Okay.
You mean if you just emailed it in this form, like yes or no, or?
Well, sometimes it's more complicated than yes or no because they have a comment. But I can send you the
That'll be great.
document itself, and you can scan through.
Right, now, for example, as I recall on the three large capital articles, the standalone, they have not yet voted on any one of those. So between now and then, if they take action or have some discussions, and any one of us who's there or Libby can share that. But we may not know how they vote until the 6th.
Right, right, right. So it may be, you know, to go on the 6th in terms of me or anyone else, right, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, often they might make changes the last date, so it's a good meeting to go to.
Yeah.
What meeting is that?
Well, the Finance Committee would make their final motions on the 6th, is the idea. And sometimes, you know, they have these pre-votes, and sometimes they say they'd like to reconsider. So sometimes that last day has a fair amount of activity. So it's a good one to go to. Anybody else have another article they want to talk about?
You said you wanted to pull 67.
I wanted to talk about 67, yes, if you don't mind, Bobby. Just to remind us all, 67 is the article which changes the bylaw for members of the Community Preservation Act Committee. And there's a recommendation in there to allow the, Bobby, see if I have it right, the land bank and the Board of Selectmen to appoint anybody, not necessarily a member of their own.
A member of their board or a designee.
Or a designee. And there's also a home rule petition, which what, asks for the same power for the
No.
No?
The Historic District Commission will be a member of the board because it's one of the original five.
So it's just the two boards?
Just the two boards.
And I, you know, Bobby knows my own feeling on this is that I think it's appropriate for the members of those boards to serve. And therefore, I wanted to ask the board if there was enough agreement that we ask or authorize council to prepare an amendment, which might also come in a motion we suggest to the Finance Committee, that puts those two people back into being members of those committees. And at least then there's a choice on the table because right now there's only one article. So I don't know how the rest of you feel about that. You know, if there's, if we have to take a vote, I know, Whitey, we're just talking about preparing some text so that we don't have to do it on the fly if that's what we want to do.
Well, that's definitely one to talk about for sure.
Yeah, but is there any objection? I mean, it would take a little bit of legal time.
If we change to what you're saying, it really doesn't change anything. We go back to what it was.
Right, although there are some other things in there because we take care of some other language changes. I think, Bobby, to make it clearer, you know, because there was a question.
I can't remember off the top of my head, but all it really did was it said that the, that the issue was that there was an appointee from the Historic District Commission. We cleared that up, and we've already talked to the chairman. He's planning on, right after the election, having someone from his board take Mark's seat on the board.
Got you, okay, so that'll be clear.
The other two was what was, what last year tried to be changed, and it was overwhelmingly shot down at town meeting. So what I did was went with Lauren to make it, basically what town meeting said was that they were fine. That was the impression I got.
No, and I think you did just what we asked you to do. You did a good job. I'm just saying there's another point of view, and at least then we'd have language that presents that point of view. So I don't know if I need a motion, but if there's no objection, how's I want to put it that way, that we use council to prepare a motion which reflects that, at least it gives us an option. So I don't hear an objection, Libby.
Sorry, prepare a motion to?
A motion or an amendment that would change those two committees to remain as members of those committees. I think there are some other reasons that the articles should go through anyway.
The reason that it was, and we had quite a bit of discussion about this with Lauren, just so you all are aware, is because those two seats are not required on the CPC, and they could basically be anyone in the community, that we felt that as long as the boards were happy with the performance of the individual they had, and you all know, because we all sit on numerous boards, and it may come a time when even this board decides that they don't have the time, the members of this board don't have the time to sit on that board. And as long as they represent what this board wants, then, and which is what is happening right now with the land bank, the land bank votes annually to keep Ken there, that we wanted to give them the legal ability to do that.
Right, I understand. So that's the issue. Yes, Mr. Vors?
Mr. Chairman, could I just ask a question?
Sure.
I understand the point on the land bank, but the Board of Selectmen has, to my knowledge, never not sent one of its members. I just wanted to be clear on that.
You're right, Andrew, and it would probably always still be a member. All that we're doing is changing the wording to say if they so choose to send someone else, they could.
Right, but the board, I haven't, I'm just, has the board decided that that would be a good idea? I mean, I know that the land bank
No.
has expressed their desire to do it, but
It basically leaves it up to each board to decide if they wanted someone from their board or a designee.
Okay, thank you.
Right, institutionally, I feel it's better to force the issue, so that's where our difference comes.
I just tried to fix it, that's all.
I understand.
So, Mr. Chairman, an amendment to have the land bank and the BOS members remain members of those groups, not?
And the other changes that were involved in the bylaw would remain.
Okay.
So it's a pretty simple thing, actually.
Is it just the land bank and the Board of Selectmen?
Yes.
I think the Board of Selectmen ought to have a member, be required to have one of their members.
We do.
Well, I think Whitey's saying be required, period.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The only reason that the Selectmen was even thrown in there was because the Selectmen's seat and the land bank's seat are additional, they're a town bylaw. They're not part of the state statute. The state CPC says you'll have five members, and they must be members of their boards. Then it says you can have up to four additional members of the towns choosing. In our case, we say we want a member of the land bank, of the Board of Selectmen, and two members at large. And Lauren was very clear and said because it's a town bylaw, the only, right now the bylaw says a member. So technically, the land bank is in violation of the law. And to clear that up, we added the word designee.
I don't mind it for the land bank.
Well
I'm skeptical of it.
We could take out just the Selectmen if you wanted, but the reality is, Whitey, that is this board, I don't ever see us putting a designee. It isn't, you can do either or. It can be a member or a designee if the board decides they don't have time to sit on the board, on that committee. But I don't ever see this board, in its present form anyway, putting a designee on that board, so.
So let's foresee it.
So why change it?
Because the land bank says that five members of the land bank, one is which is away for most of the year, says that they don't have time to sit on that board.
I don't mind the land bank, though.
I actually mind the land bank too, Whitey. Not that it's a big issue, but I think they have, I think they have time, frankly.
Well, they do.
They do, and they're not overburdened by meetings or attending other committees. And to me, a responsibility of running for the land bank includes serving on this committee, period. So that's the point of view.
Or it'll just be an eight-member board.
Yeah, if they choose not to serve. I think they'll find a member who will serve, frankly. Okay, other articles you want to think about tonight, or you want to wait till next week? That's fine with me.
The following week.
Yeah, sorry, the following week. Libby, but anything else you want to bring to our attention that's controversial, or it's?
I don't know if it's controversial.
To make sure it's on our mind as we go through the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, Andrew and I talked a little bit before the meeting, and FinCom has had a bit of discussion. There's a couple of sewer district articles, one of which involves Monomoy. And there's been a bit of discussion about maybe not proceeding with that article. And I think we're kind of mulling that over a bit.
Are you coming to that conclusion, you think, or? Okay, got you.
I think those are the main, yeah, until CWMP update is more complete.
Are you talking about proceeding with the one that gives us permission to put people into the district too? Or just the specific one referenced by the Monomoy people?
I think at this point, based on my discussion with Libby and with Cara, that the one that gives you permission, we might put that off until the CPC reviews or is updated. Oh, sorry, I'm sorry. It's really late here.
I don't think we're going to mind. It's just nice to know what our plan is here.
Right, and I think it was at least important to raise the issue that it should be out there and on the table, so, and that. But I do, and the Monomoy issue, I think that because it's a subset and because there may be other things being investigated, I do think, though, that I feel very strongly that the Westchester article should proceed ahead. Those properties have been put into essentially a needs district because they're part of the Hummock Pond watershed.
Right, and I've heard from some of those folks, I s- Right, and I've heard from some of those folks, I suspect others have as well, they really want to get in.
Right.
And I think that's one of the primary drivers we're interested here. If they want to get in, let's get them in.
Right, and we found that there are holes in that, that, you know, some of the people are actually already hooked up, so that definitely should move forward. The other two, I think there's-
The other two may not, got you.
Yeah, let's talk about some of the benefit of our discussion, it's actually, I think, helped town really, participants get a sense of this, too.
Right, yeah, I'm with you.
It all starts becoming very apparent, and I don't mind just about March 7th, if it means March 31st.
So, I'm with you. Libby, I don't have any other specific articles. I mean, I think you all need to think about those capital articles, because those are critical ones. The Finance Committee has been struggling with some of the Tom Nevers articles and some other things, which they're trying to figure out, so.
Yeah, Tom Nevers Bike Lane might be one for you guys to think about.
Yeah, so just, you can tell when you go to the FinCom meetings, when they get into the dialogue about that, there's some differences of opinion, so.
It was a close vote.
All right, that's it for that item. I have one other thing quickly, and that's that there's a, a meeting has been posted to, for the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board to meet Friday at six o'clock.
This Friday?
This Friday, to discuss a time-sensitive litigation matter in executive session. So I want to let the board know that's been posted.
Where are we doing that?
And the location, do we have a location yet?
Two fairgrounds, right.
Two fairgrounds, right. So, sorry to do that, but it's just something that's come up, and it has to be dealt with, so we hope.
Andrew, will you be there for that?
Sir?
You'll be there for that, right?
I will.
How about if I just meet you at five, then?
Yes, great.
And then we'll just go right into that.
The time's at six, I'm sorry.
Six, yeah, six o'clock Friday evening, Planning Board and Board of Selectmen will have a meeting, and it will be an executive session meeting, so.
Yeah, it's one more next one.
Two fairgrounds. I don't have anything else. Is there a motion to adjourn? There is, and a second, Bobby, go ahead.
Just one quick thing for the committee reports. I'm going to be going to that Striper meeting in Boston on Tuesday.
Oh, good. Yeah, as long as Whitey's not back, I should mention, we did have an audit committee, and we had a two-hour audit committee, and had a very extensive report from the town's auditor